All right, we'd like to call the July 11th Regular Board Meeting into order. I can see one board member coming up. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon. Pete Wildebohr.
Present.
Pat Bradford.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Stephanie Cravill.
Here.
Melissa Mason.
Here.
Hugh McManus.
Present.
Stephanie Walker.
Here.
And Pat Bradford.
I'm here.
All right, we are all here. Thank you, board members, for being here. We will continue with the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Bradford. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Mason. Any discussion? If not all in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Pass the seven zero. We will have our invocation this morning. That will be provided for us by Pastor Tim Reeves from the Pine Valley Methodist Church. Pastor Reeves, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. Let us stand. Had a professor at Duke Divinity School that would sometimes start his prayer with a little song like this. Let us pray. I need thee, oh, I need thee. Every hour I need thee. Oh, bless me now, oh Savior. I come to thee. Lord, we need you. Gracious and loving God, we praise you and thank you for today and for this gathering of the New Hanover Board of Education, of our school superintendent, Dr. Faust, county school officials, and concerned parents and citizens. Lord, we need you. We pray for all the students, the teachers, the school staff, and administration. We pray for their safety and their well-being. Lord, we need you. As our board meets tonight, Lord, we pray that every one here will show grace to one another, that even when there are passionate pleas or discussions, Lord, help us to show mutual respect to each other. And, Lord, we pray that the decisions that are made tonight will transcend agendas or ideologies, but that they will be what is best to protect the innocence and the lives of our children. Lord, we need you. Lead this group tonight with your Spirit, oh God. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, help us to do what we need to do and to do our part to make this world and this county and our schools a better place. Lord, we need you. And we pray this in the mighty name of Jesus and all God's people say it. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. We will ask now for Jake Yates, the music teacher at Snipes Academy, and Jake will be I've asked Board Member Hugh McManus to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. performing the National Anthem for us.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, unified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Next on our approvals will be approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Bradford approved. Motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Barnhart, thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have, um, Mr.-
Ms. Cravill?
Hold up. I think I'm going to have to put this on. I'm getting it.
Okay.
It had the, um, it wasn't all the minutes. It was, um, just a couple of them.
Ms. Cravill, would you put your mic on, please?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Put her on. All right, it's coming. In the, um, the, where do we put, this is for, um, the minutes for the 626 Agenda Review, and we spent quite a bit of time talking about the work session there. Where do we capture those discussions?
That's a good question.
Do we need separate minutes for that meeting? We really didn't, we really kind of included it all in the Agenda Review, but we did have a pretty significant discussion on narrowing down our focus and getting it so that Ms. Barnum, you know, was going to lead us and that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to include that somewhere and wherever you think it's appropriate.
Okay. Maybe we can put an addendum at, Mr. Vogel, do you have any suggestions? Maybe addendum at the end?
No, I mean, other than to say if it was discussed during that meeting, it should be in the minutes of that meeting, whether you wanted to make it an addendum or insert it somewhere in the middle, is at the discretion of the board.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we put it in at the end as an addendum, so we have a page four. So do we want to hold off on this one?
Can we hold off on that one and then you can work with Ms. Bowie about, you know, what actually to say? I mean, there-
Okay, absolutely.
And then, other than that, I don't have any other things.
Okay, so, with the exception of the 626 Agenda Meeting, we have a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not all in favor of approving the minutes for the other ones? We have a first, a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Pass the seven zero, and we will get them for our next meeting. At this point, we, I believe it's clear, who's going to be coming up for the recognitions? Clarice, okay, Ed is here. So we have our July recognitions.
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Faust, Board Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board of Education, I am pleased to be able to bring you your July recognitions this month. During this academic year, the New Hanover County School Student Support Division had the opportunity to conduct stewards of children darkness-to-light training for all secondary staff members to prevent child sexual abuse. We are pleased to announce that we have successfully trained 1,239 staff members. Thanks to the remarkable turnout, our secondary schools have attained Partner in Prevention status. We thank the principals and their schools for their leadership and dedication to safeguarding our students and maintaining a secure school environment. At this time, I would like to welcome the following secondary schools up to get their recognition certificates. Laney High School. Mosley Career Readiness Academy at Mosley. Murray Middle School. Wilmington Early College High School. Isaac Bear. New Hanover High School. Ashley High School. Myrtle Grove Middle School. Williston Middle School. Mr. Madden, we'll just have you come back up and accept for Williston as well. Noble Middle School. Holly Shelter Middle. J.C. Rowe. Mr. Broadfoot, you can just come back in line, too. And Trask Middle School. We'd like to give all these principals a round of applause for their commitment to safety and care for their students. Principals, don't leave just yet. The Carousel, well, you can go have a seat, but the Carousel Center also has plaques for your schools as well. Which brings me to our next recognition of the evening. We couldn't have achieved Partner in Prevention status without the dedication and effort of our student support team, which includes Lisa Brenner, Tanya Jordan, Donna Hudson, and Dr. Veronica Edge. And if any of those are here, if they could please come up front. We're also- We are also grateful to be able to support, for the support and collaboration of our partners at the Carousel Center. We want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and honor the Carousel Center and its staff compromising, comprising of Amy Feath, Rebecca Martin, Brianna Bedell, Kelly Grisby, and Jordan Chapman. They will receive the Student Support Partnership Award for their exceptional work this evening. That concludes our recognitions for the evening.
All right, Dr. Barnes, I believe, is next with the administrative introductions. Dr. Barnes?
Good evening. I feel kind of like Captain America assembling my new team of Avengers here, so there are a lot of folks we're going to introduce for you tonight. I'd like you, when you guys' names are called, to come on up and join me up here at the front and say hello and get our picture taken all together as a group. There are several folks who are unable to be here tonight, so I'd like to introduce them anyway, and they'll come back for another hello at another time. First off, our new Chief Communications Officer is named Salvador Cardella. Most recently, he has served with the Defense Agency's Initiative with the Marine Corps and has also, prior to his retirement from the Marine Corps, been the Communications Strategy and Operations Chief, Public Affairs Chief, and Public Affairs Manager. He also has his Bachelor's Degree in Communication from Bridgewater and his Master's Degree from National University in Chicago. Also not with us tonight, Assistant Principal of Laney High School, Jacob Valentino. Previously, Mr. Valentino served as a World History Civics, American History teacher. He's also been a JV Basketball and Baseball Coach, as well as getting his Bachelor's Degree in Telecommunications from Bowling Green State University and his Master's in East Carolina. And he'll be the new Assistant Principal at Laney High School. Also not able to be here tonight, but his principal is, you can wave at us, Ms. Morsey, she's back there. The new Principal, Assistant Principal of J.C. Rowe is John Hile. He has previously served as the Dean of Students from Noble Middle School, high school phys ed, and health teacher with Pender County Schools, and also worked with Kansas Public, Kansas Public Schools as well. All right, starting in our lineup tonight, we want to introduce the Principal of Ashley High School, Mike Perez. Mr. Perez? Most recently, he served as a Principal of Grassville High School, Principal of Owens Middle School, all in Chesapeake, Virginia. He has a Master's Degree from Old Dominion in Norfolk, Virginia, so, say hello.
I love the Grand Canyon.
And Mr. Perez is going to be again working at Ashley High School. Next, do we have Jennifer Angel, are you here? Okay, she is, she's landing as we speak. You know, sometimes the Avengers fly in a little late. Pam Biggs? Waiting for her as well? Okay. You guys were a little faster than I expected. I told them not to show up right until a little bit after five, and you guys got a little ahead of me. Mr. Pizarro? Okay. Ms. Fason? Michelle, come on, Michelle. All right, Michelle Fason is the Principal at Wrightsboro Elementary School. Previously, she was at Laney High School as the Assistant Principal. She's also been the Dean of Students at Laney and an Assistant Principal at Holly Shelter and Trask. All right, Kelly Crowley? Come on, Kelly. Ms. Crowley served as the multi-tier Student Support Team Coordinator, Interventionist, Instructional Coach, and Teacher at Pine Valley Elementary. Her Bachelor's is in Elementary Ed, and she has her Master's Degree in Curriculum Instruction and Supervision and School Administration from UNC Wilmington. All right, next up, I've seen her earlier, Assistant Principal at Freeman Elementary is Kim Fuller. Ms. Fuller served as a Principal Intern at Alderman Elementary School and mentored Freeman Elementary, and she's just recently completed her Master's Degree in School Administration from East Carolina. Next up, the Assistant Principal, the new Assistant Principal at Snipes Academy of Arts and Design is Maura Omahoney. Previously, she served as an Interim AP, Instructional Coach, MTSS Coordinator, Intercession Administrator, third and fourth grade teacher, and a third grade teacher at Penny Road Elementary in Cary. So congratulations to you, Ms. Maura Omahoney. And she is another UNC Wilmington grad. All right, next up on the docket is Kendra Harrison, the Assistant Principal at Wrightsboro Elementary. Kendra, there she is. Previously, Ms. Harrison served as an Instructional Coach at Forest Hills Global and an AIG Coordinator of Math Science at Roland Greys. She has also got her add-on licensure from UNC Wilmington as well. Next up is Joanna Souza. Ms. Souza is the new Executive Director of Special Education for the District. Previously, she served as an Interim Special Ed and Related Services Director, Specialist and Behavior Support Team Leader, Middle School Liaison, and has worked in Guilford County Schools, Liberty Day Elementary School, and Randolph County, and has gotten her Master's Degree from High Point. So Ms. Souza, say hello to them and to everybody. I'm going to really slowly give the next couple of introductions. They will come in and wave when they get here. Jennifer Angel is the new Principal at Carolina Beach Elementary. Previously, Ms. Angel served as a Principal of Sauv Topps Elementary, Bergau Elementary, Cape Fear Elementary, and Malpas Corner Elementary with Pender County Schools. She has her licensure from UNC Wilmington and her Bachelor's Degree and Master's Degree as well, so she will wave when she gets in. And the last one, Pamela Biggs. Previously, served as the Principal of Lincoln Elementary in Brunswick County, and she will be the new Principal at Cottington Elementary. And Joseph Pizarro is from all the way in big old Nevada. Mr. Pizarro served as a Principal and Assistant Principal at Libby Booth Elementary School in Washoe County School District in Nevada, and he has his degree from University of Nevada in Reno, and both he and his wife have come here to work with us in New Hanover County Schools, so. This, by the way, is Jennifer Angel. Look, she slid right in. It is, nicely done. So to the community as well, to all of you, we are happy to have you here. You're the best of the best, and we're pleased that you're a part of our school system. Okay, thank you. I'll introduce the other ones when they get here. One more round of applause.
Report. Dr. Faust?
The 2023 school year will begin tomorrow. There's much, and this is for our year-round schools, sorry, not for, no hard tacks, for our year-round schools. There's much to be excited about, and we are eager to welcome them back for our year-round students at Cottington and Eden Elementary. We are thrilled to embark on a new chapter of learning and growth with our students and our dedicated staff and supportive families. The district remains steadfast in using our strategic plan as a guiding compass. With that in mind, we're determined to achieve 90% of our students reading on grade level by the end of third grade. The 2023, 2023, 2024 school year holds great promise as we welcome back our, that's, I just read, I've said that before. Next week marks the highly anticipated Administrator's Leadership Retreat for our district leaders. Focus on the theme of peak-performing educators. For two days, our dedicated building and division leaders will come together for a valuable opportunity for networking, collaboration, and professional development. The peaking-performing educators theme underscores our commitment to cultivating excellence in teaching and learning throughout the retreat. Our leaders will explore strategies and approaches to maximize their potential and that of their teams. We anticipate transformative outcomes of our leaders and the district as a whole. Our leaders will be equipped to foster a high-performance culture of elevating our students and their teams' experience. Transportation reminder. Bus requests for the school year will carry over to the new year, and community stops will be assigned. If your child needs a new community bus stop or you were given a stop as an exception, please make transportation requests at least three weeks before the first day of school. The deadlines are as follows. For new requests, July 19th, 2023, C-Tech, Wex, Isaac Bear. July 20th, 2023, Freeman and Snipes. August 7th, 2023, Traditional Schools. August 15th, 2023, for pre-k. Families can contact your school's main office to request a bus stop. Bus stop requests submitted after the deadline will be processed, will not be processed until two weeks after the school year started. That's our own comments.
Thank you, Dr. Faust. Thank you very much. Dr. Barnes, I see you're still standing, so would you like to come on back?
This is Joseph Pizarro. This is the guy from Nevada I was telling you about. And Mr. Pizarro is taking over as Principal of Sunset Elementary, so we are glad to have him.
I'm so excited to be here. Thank you. Hello, it's wonderful to be here. I'm beyond excited. I'm in my second week at Sunset Park, and I feel like I won the lottery, so I couldn't be happier. What a beautiful school, beautiful community, and if we're not in my zone or our zone, we are really close to it. So we're, I'm still learning my geography. I was driving the zone the other day, and one of these days I'll be able to do it without the maps on my, on my phone, but I couldn't be more excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome. We will carry on with the Board Chairperson's Report. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more, I'm sorry. I didn't look up, I apologize.
This is Pamela Biggs. She's the one I was telling you about. We were going to one of our-
Cottington.
Which opens this week, tomorrow, so just wanted to say hello and have them a chance to say hello to you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've taught school in New Hanover County for 14 years, and I'm thrilled to be back in New Hanover County, and Cottington has been wonderful. I've been there three days, and it's truly my dream job, and I'm happy to be there.
Great. Welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you. Now, if Dr. Barnes will allow, I'll continue with my Board Chairperson's Report. Just have a few quick notes. I hope you're having a great summer, and it's going well. Extremely excited about next school year. I know that everyone is. I guess we start very soon. It's very, very exciting. We, there, as Dr. Faust mentioned, we'll have a Leadership Conference next week. It's a two-day conference, getting ready for next school year. It will be very exciting and very informative. I want to thank Dr. Faust, Ms. Barnum, the Principals, as well as our Board Members, Central Office, and Community Members who attended our work session on student behavior and discipline right before this meeting. We all know that we need to keep our students safe is a definite priority for the Board, so thank you for being there and taking part in that. I think it was the first of many, but I think it was very, very important. I also want to thank the faculty of Ashley High School, Central Office, Board Members, and Parents, and Students who attended the Round Table at Ashley High School on June 22nd. It was a very informative and worthwhile meeting. We hope to have future-
Oh, I'm sorry, we have one more. I'm sorry, I didn't look up. I apologize.
This is Pamela Biggs. She's the one I was telling you about from one of our, which opens this week, tomorrow.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I've taught school in New Hanover County for 14 years, and I'm thrilled to be back in New Hanover County. And Cottington has been wonderful. I've been there three days, and it's truly my dream job, and I'm happy to be there.
Welcome. Glad you're here. Thank you. Now, if Dr. Barnes will allow, I'll continue with my board chairperson's report. Just have a few quick notes. I hope you're having a great summer and it's going well. Extremely excited about next school year. I know that everyone is. I guess we start very soon. It's very, very exciting. As Dr. Faust mentioned, we'll have a leadership conference next week. It's a two-day conference, getting ready for next school year. It will be very exciting and very informative. I want to thank Dr. Faust, Ms. Varnum, the principals, as well as our board members, central office, and community members who attended our work session on student behavior and discipline right before this meeting. We all know that we need to keep our students safe. It is a definite priority for the board. So thank you for being there and taking part in that. I think it was the first of many, but I think it was very, very important. I also want to thank the faculty of Ashley High School, central office, board members, and parents, and students who attended the roundtable at Ashley High School on June 22nd. It was a very informative and worthwhile meeting. We hope to have future roundtable meetings focused on safety at all of our high schools. And speaking of high schools, it was exciting to participate at Williston for the 1969 and 1970 graduates from Williston High School. That ends my report. Thank you very much. We will continue on with our call to audience. We're going to do it in the same format as we have in the past. So Ms. Barnhart, Ms. Bradford, excuse me.
Good evening. Our first speaker, Christina Mercier.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about punitive discipline and why it does not work. I will start by saying that I believe teachers and other staff should feel safe at their workplace and should not be allowed to be either verbally or physically abused by students. The best way to have that happen is to have fair and consistent rules applied uniformly across schools and grade levels. But as the retired middle school short-term suspension teacher at J.C. Rowe, I know this is not the case. In the 21-22 school year, 55% of the referrals I received were for African-American students, even though they only make up about 16% of the school system's enrollment. White students did make up 24% of the referrals, but they make up about 58% of the enrollment. And Hispanic referrals were about 17%, with most from one school. Don't these numbers seem odd? You may be thinking that certainly if a student did something bad enough to be suspended for between five and 10 days, then they deserved it, right? Of course, that is the case sometimes, but just as often, certain students get harsher punishments. Consider this example. I had a group of five Hispanic boys who were suspended the week before the EOG, so they must have done something really bad. What they actually did was during recess, have another student take pictures of them doing things like putting traffic cones on their heads. This is a silly but typical middle school situation, and it happens. But they were sent to Row, and the photographer, who was white, got no consequences at all. I can tell you that all these repeated suspensions have a negative impact on these kids and on the way they feel about school. They feel like targets. I've seen more than one student become the so-called "bad kid" the system seemed to expect them to be. We know that the best way to address student behavior is to find the root of it. What trauma has the child experienced that is causing them to act out? We know that teachers, staff, and administrators can be trained to identify issues and use de-escalation to minimize issues. Zero tolerance policies aren't the answer to the current issues. What New Hanover County Schools needs is a culture shift where all students are dealt with equally when they've broken a rule, instead of seeing Black and Brown students misdeeds through a stricter lens. Thank you.
Good evening. Many of you have been convinced that children should not be learning social and emotional skills at school. I would like to introduce you to one of the finest educators in the skills that we have in the academy. Reverend Fred Rogers, I'm sure you're familiar with. For 40 years, taught social and emotional skills. Social and emotional skills need to be taught, just like reading and math. Some of us had the good fortune to have Mr. Rogers help teach us these skills along with our parents and teachers. But kids today don't have Mr. Rogers, and many of them are not learning these skills at home for a variety of reasons. So it falls on the schools to teach kids to be nice to each other, that everyone is important, ways to deal with your own and other people's emotions. For a lot of kids, these skills have to be taught. I would like to share with you a couple of thoughts from Mr. Rogers. We live in a world in which we need to share responsibility. It's easy to say, "It's not my child, not my community, not my world, not my problem." Then there are those who see the need and respond. I consider those people heroes. In appreciating our neighbor, we're participating in something truly sacred. There are three ways to ultimately, to ultimate success. The first way is to be kind, the second way is to be kind, the third way is to be kind. If you could only sense how important you are to the lives of those you meet, how important you can be to people you may never even dream of. There is something of yourself that you leave at every meeting with another person. So are you always being kind? Are you leaving something good about yourself at every meeting? Are you seeing the needs and responding? Or are you the one saying, "Not my child, not my community, not my problem"? Would Mr. Rogers be proud of how you're doing your jobs?
Thank you. Sandy Alves.
I'm back. As I've watched the board these past few months, I've been filled with an overwhelming sense of sadness. For years, I've encouraged the board to embrace neuroscience-based best practices for supporting our children's behavioral and learning needs. I asked you to empower our staff with tools that we, so that we could abandon seclusion. You banned seclusion rooms, but you left staff to fend for themselves. This is cruel to children and the adults who work with them. I am saddened by your cruelty. I have implored this board to invest in support for our children with disabilities so that they can learn inclusively with their peers. In return, I have listened to a board member repeatedly prioritize the rest of the class over the needs of our disabled children. This board member has not shown concern for the disabled child who struggles. Instead, she cherishes the good children who do not need intensive support. I am saddened by your ostracism. In the parable of the sheep, Jesus shares how the shepherd leaves the flock of 99 and searches for the one who is lost and in need. Why? Because the one who was lost is valued and needs love, guidance, and protection. In the parable, the shepherd doesn't punish the one who is lost. He doesn't seclude them, restrain them, or suspend them. Instead, he rejoices compassionately and compassionately surrounds them with the love and acceptance of the flock. The child in the class who is struggling needs the same compassion so that they can learn with their peers, not be separated and left for lost. We are called to prioritize support for the ones who need the most, not the 99. What will be your legacy? Will you continue to build one of cruelty that ostracizes the one? Or will your legacy be that of the shepherd?
They believe in Santa and the Easter Bunny too. They hope the tooth fairy leaves them money for their tooth. Why can't they have the right to have a parent at the hearing where the principal can kick them out of school? They're five years old in kindergarten, six in the first grade. At second grade, they're seven. They love recess every day. Why can't they have the right to have a parent at the hearing where the principal can kick them out of school? Welcome, parents, in person or by telephone or even with Zoom. Before there's a consequence, young kids deserve the right to have a parent in the room. A parent can ask questions about what's been tried before and make sure the suspensions use as the last resort. Why can't they have the right to have a parent at the hearing where the principal can kick them out of school? Welcome, parents, in person or by telephone or even with a Zoom. Before there's a consequence, young kids deserve the right to have a parent in the room. Little kids need parents when it's time to tie their shoes, and sometimes they need extra help to learn the golden rule. Why can't they have the right to have a parent at the hearing where the principal can kick them out of school? Where the principal can kick them out of school?
Elizabeth McLeod.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth McLeod. When the Policy Committee met in May, Dr. Faust took the opportunity to describe what typically happens after there is a disruptive incident in school. First, the administrator does what's called due process. It begins by asking a student their side of the story. Next, the student writes down their story. They can list witnesses, too. Then, the administrator gets the witnesses and has them write their side of the story. Next, the administrator compares the written stories. If they match up, the student is told which school board policy they have broken. Then, referring to the student handbook, the student is told which violation level it is and the consequence they will receive. Finally, the administrator calls the student's parent to inform them of the incident, the violation, and the consequence. Love Our Children is asking that short-term suspension policy 4351 be changed for five, six, and seven-year-olds. We believe that our youngest learners should have the right to have a parent present before the consequence is determined so that they can review the positive behavior support alternatives that have been tried with their child and ensure that an out-of-school suspension is only used as a last resort. Young kids deserve the right to have a parent in the room. Thank you.
Judy Justice.
Hi. Good to see everybody up there. If you want real student success for New Hanover County Schools, you need to listen and do the following. Stop focusing on the current cultural wars, behavior coming out of your political beliefs, and start focusing on our students' academic needs. Allow teachers to use effective, engaging, and innovative curriculum taught by experienced staff, not the current canned curriculum taught by the current inexperienced emergency hires and other new teachers. We need to respect and pay experienced teachers properly. We have lost probably around 500 staff members this year for a reason. Address our superintendent's weaknesses, including his treatment of our staff. His leadership style and lack of educational expertise are some of the main reasons many of our experienced staff members have left. Environment matters. Fix the facilities. Properly balance the school's population, using socioeconomic factors through targeted redistricting, hiring more Black teachers and administrators, who have left our district in record numbers since our current superintendent has come on board. Work with the public and county commissioners to get the $1.5 billion promised to our public schools with the sale of our county hospital. Work with the public and the North Carolina Legislature to get those legislators to release the $6 billion currently in a state slush fund that should have been used for our state schools for those 10 years. We are 48th in the nation in providing resources to our public schools because instead of supporting public schools, those same legislators have been denying proper funding for over a decade while putting that money that should have gone to our kids' education in their slush fund. In other words, stop ignoring the obvious and start doing the job you were all elected to do.
Tiffany Salter.
Whoever's got their cellphone going, if you would please silence that. Thank you.
Hi. Recently, my son and I read, "Are You There, God? It's Me, Margaret." The book by Judy Blume centers around a young girl who's going through puberty and is questioning religion. The book has appeared on numerous banned lists since it was published in 1970 due to its frank discussion of sexuality, puberty, and skepticism of organized religion. Some might say it's strange to read a book that was seemingly written for girls to a preteen boy. I would disagree. I wanted my son, who's typical in many ways, to understand, better understand, the experience of a typical girl his same age. That's called perspective-taking. I learned that term when I was in school for elementary education. Perspective-taking is the ability to look beyond your own point of view to consider how someone else may think or feel about something. It's a common literary technique, but its usefulness reaches far beyond books. Research tells us that understanding others' perspectives is an important social skill that we need in order to make and sustain relationships, to facilitate emotional regulation, to increase complex reasoning and problem-solving, and it reduces bias. Incidentally, the book stamped that you're discussing later has that same goal. My point is, we are not a monolithic Christian voice, much to the ire of some. We are diverse in our makeup and in our belief systems. You are not representing one type of family in our district. You took an oath to represent all of us. The booking question has already been reviewed by the appropriate committees, using the policies already in place, and the parent who questioned the book was provided an alternative for their child's assignment. Removing a book because it is rejected or feared by a guardian or group gives that guardian or group control to make decisions for all households, for all students. That's infringing upon the rights of others. Stop wasting our time talking about reviewing books and leave that to the trained professionals. Start being an advocate for our schools to get the funding we need as we are severely understaffed and underserved.
Gail Tabor. Gail Tabor. Last call. Gail Tabor. Next up, Chris Sutton.
I wanted to start off by saying that I believe that we need to always address our checkered history with racism, especially our local racism with 1898 massacre and everything else. I do believe that it needs to be taught historically. It needs to be fact-based. And that is honestly my concern with stamp, especially being taught in an English class. Now, I understand what the reasoning was. I've read, I've looked at everything everyone's posted, and realistically, at the end of the day, there was just too many inaccuracies in that book for me to really feel okay with it. And not just that, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had a discussion multiple times in here about critical race theory. And I understand that it's looking at our laws and looking at our institutions through a racial lens. And I mean, I guess the best way to say it is everyone denied that it was in our schools, but yet now we're here having a conversation of whether this book should be allowed or not. And now personally, I believe it should be allowed in the library. I do. Now, there are certain books that I believe should not be allowed in our library. I think that some of them are sexually explicit to the point that we need to come up with some type of rating system, like a G, PG, PG-13-style rating system. And some of these books are truly sexually explicit, multiple chapters inside of there that just were sex scenes. And most of them are heterosexual. It has nothing to do with LGBTQ. A lot of them, I mean, I, long story short, we've got issues, and I hope y'all don't spend all of our time in this community dealing with these issues. I hope that we can find something better, because realistically, this is, this is getting rough. And I'm gonna leave you with this, like, I mean, in that book, it falsely blamed Reagan's economic policies for the skyrocketing unemployment, which is factually untrue. It called the movie Rocky racist. Like, there was a lot of things in there that really rubbed me wrong, and I think if it was one thing, if we talked about the different institutional racism parts as part of history, fact-based, but unfortunately, we missed the mark with this. Y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Jamie Pond.
Really tall person, then really short person. Good evening. A few weeks ago, I asked the board if you were here to understand others or to be understood. And this evening, I would like the board to consider that the history that you learned in school isn't the same history kids learn today, and that's a good thing. Today, we have more and more African-American and Black historians and authors who've been working to fill a gap of information, which includes a time when Black individuals were intentionally barred from learning to read and write. As such, one must understand that United States history has excluded others who are kept from challenging the power structure and dynamics within our society. Power is rarely given up from those who have it. Instead, when this power, may it be ideas that have become institutionalized rather than supported with facts, when this power is challenged, people often respond defensively. Chris's own uncomfortableness, I'm just gonna mention that because he was just up here talking about the same thing. They respond, they typically, people will respond defensively, respond by doubling down on how they were raised and what they learned and who they are. And this is called the backfire effect. People get extra defensive. Being critical of our history is often viewed as a threat to our legacy and past things that many people hold dear, especially as it relates to their own identity and values, including the voice. Including the voices of Black authors and experts like Kendi does challenge our understanding of the past, as it has been written primarily by white individuals. And this challenge to our past thinking should be challenged. As historians have sought greater understanding, they have uncovered more evidence and experiences to help us understand the richness of our history. History is complex, is complicated, and it's not always comforting to learn things that challenge your worldview, but this doesn't mean the facts presented are inaccurate. I would like to encourage you to continue to allow students to read books by experts in the field, including Black historians, rather than take these books off the shelves and out of the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Pond. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Carrie Snook. She's coming.
Hi, I don't think I'll need the whole time. I just wanted to say thank you all for allowing the call to the audience and allowing folks to say what they mean. And I'm, I have a little bit of a, I don't like public speaking, so, but I felt strongly enough that to even be considering banning books is concerning enough for me that I felt I needed to say that. So, I will yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. James Fisher.
Hello. Good evening. I'm James Fisher. I, too, am gonna talk about policy 4351, but I do not sing. So, Love Our Children is respectfully asking the Policy Committee to revise short-term suspension policy 4351 with a single sentence. And that sentence would be, "Students under the age of eight or under grade three have the right to have a parent or other representative present at the informal hearing." Children under the age of eight or under grade three are typically five, six, and seven years old, as you know. And giving those young children the right to have a parent present means that the parent could either attend in person, or by phone call, or by video conference. They may choose not to be present. Parents are not required to attend. The informal hearing is where a principal can decide whether or not to suspend a child from school for up to 10 days. And policy 4351 states that, quote, "School administrators will utilize positive behavior support alternatives to suspensions and only use out-of-school suspensions as a last resort." Having a parent present gives them an opportunity to review that positive behavioral support that has been used with their child and to make sure that out-of-school suspensions are only used as a last resort before the decision is made. The school principal still, of course, has the authority to decide if the five, six, or seven-year-old will be suspended. Therefore, I, we, urge you to add the sentence, "Students under the age of eight or under grade three have the right to have a parent or other representative present at the informal hearing," and adding that to policy 4351. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davidson. Ms. Davidson. Last name's Davidson.
Thank you. Michael Davidson.
Sorry, Michael. I can't read today.
Excuse me?
You're good.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Michael Davidson. I want to talk about two emails that I sent to the school. One, I sent to the school board concerning the book stamped. I only got responses from two board members. That was kind of disappointing. I think that if I'm going to make the effort to reach out to you with my concern, at least a response acknowledging you received my email. The second email I sent to the superintendent about the collection agency that you were thinking of hiring. I got a response back, and I'm, thank you very much again, your response back. I was referred to Ms. Sutton, and I'm actually sitting now with Ms. Sutton on Thursday at 12 o'clock to look at alternatives to hiring an outside agency that's gonna charge us 28.6% of all money brought in. I think we can do a better job than that. If any board member would like to join me, again, 12 o'clock with Ms. Sutton on Thursday, let's come up with a better idea than hiring an outside agency. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Clark. Oh, wait, I skipped Loretta Stackhouse. Forgive me. My glasses are in the shop, y'all. I can't see as well as I'd like to. Thank you.
Good evening. The short-term suspension policy 4351 states that before a student receives an out-of-school suspension, the student has the right to be present at the informal hearing but does not have the right to have a parent or other representative present. That may be appropriate for teenagers in high school, but it is inappropriate for children in kindergarten, first, and second grade. They are only five, six, and seven years old. Love Our Children is asking that you vote to change policy 4351 so that our youngest learners can have a parent present at the informal hearing before a principal kicks them out of school. This is a serious matter because an out-of-school suspension is the most severe consequence a five, six, seven-year-old child can receive. When they receive a suspension, they can't see their friends, they can't learn with their classmates, they can't play outside in recess, read books in the library, or sing songs in the music room. While they're out of school, they receive no support from their classroom teacher or the school counselor, and they miss out on good morning from the school bus driver and the wave from the custodian in the hallway. A young child's right to have a parent present means that the positive behavior support alternatives that they've already been tried with that child can be reviewed and other alternatives can be considered before a final decision is made by the principal to kick him out of school. Little kids can make big mistakes. Let them have the right to have a parent present in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stackhouse. Karen Clark.
In 1607, Robert Hunt declared over Cape Henry, "We dedicate this land and ourselves to reach the people within these shores with the gospel of Jesus Christ and to raise up godly generations after us, and with these generations take the kingdom of God to all the earth. May this covenant of dedication remain to all generations as long as the earth remains. May all remember what we have done here. Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it. Evil wants to destroy our children. Our schools plant seeds which grow and produce results. We reap what we sow. I pray in Jesus' name that no one intimidates you in their attempt to lead you away from the Word of God with empty philosophies that come from human thinking and the spiritual powers of this world, that you don't just listen to truth and not respond, for that is self-deception. I pray that each of you do what is pleasing in the Lord's sight, that you act in accordance with godly principles, that you keep your thoughts continually fixed on all that is authentic and real, honorable and admirable, beautiful and respectful, pure and holy, merciful and kind. I declare in Jesus' name, New Hanover County shall remember and call the words spoken at Cape Henry forward as the city of light on the hill that cannot be hidden. Amen."
Thank you. Veronica McQuone Brown.
When the Policy Committee met on May 16th, the discussion on short-term suspension policy 4351 included misinformation, no data, and no problem solving. For example, the proposed policy change said parents would be required to be present during any appeal after a short-term suspension had been imposed. However, there is a North Carolina general statute that states a student is not allowed to appeal the principal's decision. Also, an elementary principal at the meeting said, I quote, "We don't do suspensions unless it's seriously extenuating circumstances, and then not until they're in fourth or fifth grade," end of quote. As of April, there have been 62 suspensions in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. There was a discussion of how to meet with two sets of angry parents at the exact same time. No one at the meeting suggested any ideas on how to solve that problem. Because the discussion of policy 4351 in May included misinformation, no data, and no problem solving, Love Our Children is asking the Policy Committee to revisit policy 4351 in September. Give four, five, six, and seven-year-olds the right to have a parent present during the informal short-term suspension hearing. Give the four, five, six, and seven-year-olds the right to have a parent present. We also would like to invite you to attend a Listen and Learn workshop entitled, Know Your Rights About Short-Term Suspensions, on August 5th, sponsored by Love Our Children North Carolina and Legal Aid of North Carolina. We will email an invitation to all of you and hope that you will attend.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You're out of time. Ms. Sheridan.
Good evening. I am Dr. Michael Sheridan, and I'm also here to talk about policy 4351. When Dr. Faust was at the Policy Committee meeting in May, he spoke about the out-of-school suspension policy. He described what an elementary school principal would do if a child was crying in the office during the due process. He said, quote, "You just don't keep going asking questions. You are an adult. You are a human, too. So, you give them the tissue. You stop. You say, 'Would you like to share with your teacher? Would you like to share with a counselor? Who can help? Who would you like to talk with?'" End quote. Love Our Children would like five, six, and seven-year-old children to have the right to talk and share with a parent before they receive an out-of-school suspension. That's the person they want to talk to the most. The parent could be present in person, or by telephone, or even using Zoom. Having a child talk and share with a parent does not take any power away from the principal. The principal still has the authority to decide if a child will receive a suspension. The student handbook states, "When teachers and/or administrators consider corrective responses, restorative practices, or disciplinary action, the following factors should be considered, including the student's age, developmental level, and grade, and the student's prior behavior patterns and responses to interventions." We are simply urging you to change the short-term suspension policy 4351 and give our youngest students the right to have a parent present. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Maples. Teresa Maples.
Good evening. The U.S. military at West Point is committed to teach the cadets the values of duty, honor, and country, preparing them to live a life of excellence. The cadets learn to live honorably, lead honorably, and demonstrate excellence by having a moral, ethical character, living with integrity. Their ideals are loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and personal courage. They have very high standards. They also have the fear of the Lord, and they know they need God's wisdom. I pray you also fear the Lord and seek His wisdom. I also pray West Point Cadets prayer over each one of you. The only modification is I added school board members. O God, our Father, searcher of human hearts, help our school board members to draw near to you in sincerity and truth. Strengthen and increase their admiration for honest dealing and clean thinking, and may their hatred for hypocrisy and pretense never diminish. Encourage them in their endeavor to live above the common level of life. Make them choose the harder right instead of the easier wrong, and never be content with a half-truth when a whole could be one. Endow them with courage that is born of loyalty to all, that is noble and worthy, that scorns compromise with vice and injustice, and knows no fear when truth and right are in jeopardy. No fear when truth and right are in jeopardy. Guard them against flippancy and irreverence in the sacred things of life. Help them to maintain honor in their lives and doing their duty to God, our nation, and our county. In the name of Jesus. Proverbs 3:7-8 says, "Do not be wise in your own eyes; fear the Lord and depart from evil. It will be health to your flesh and strength to your bones." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maples. Alicia Ogindelli.
Good evening. Last month, Love Our Children shared questions we had for Ms. Vronem. We want to better understand how the New Hanover County schools got sanctioned by the federal government Individual with Disability Act for the past five years. The district was sanctioned for the significant disproportionality of out-of-school suspension for Black special education students. They receive suspensions at four and a half times the rate of their peers. As a result, 15% of the money that our special education programs were to receive each year was set aside to address the disproportionality. Earlier, Ms. Vronem reported that 4.5 million that should have gone to our special education students didn't. That's 4.5 million of lost special education services and support over the past five years. It's shameful to take from the disadvantaged. It's shameful. This is yet another reason to revisit the short-term policy 4351. So, again, here are our questions. How was the public notified about the sanctions during the past five years? Which services and programs were not provided to our special education students during the past five years? Who is mandated on the mandated review team that must review the district's policies, practices, and procedures related to suspensions? Will the review team report be made public? Get the answers. Use the data. Revise short-term suspensions policy 4351 so that it support all of our students. They deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Katie Gates.
Good evening, Board. I've been speaking for two years at meetings with the goal of relating agenda items back to U.S. history and our founding documents. I remain concerned over the infiltration of socialistic principles, the fulfillment of communistic goals that I see permeating the schools and that promote a divisive and anti-American sentiment. Though I may not be able to attend as many school board meetings going forward, it is my hope that the school board will pursue policy accountability and social studies, English, and U.S. history curriculums, teaching the whole history from diverse perspectives and not people's feelings about history in place of truth. Choose books that teach both the dark parts of human history, of which we have many, and our incredible progress as a nation, so that our kids can comprehensively understand our complete history. Choose books that are not race-baiting and divisive. Thankfully, SB 49 will likely be enacted into law this summer, and our state government will lead in supporting parent rights and more scrutiny on the books chosen for the classroom. The beauty of living in America is that we are a nation which is incredibly diverse, yet whose people share the same values, or they should. As it says on all of our coins, "We are one nation under God with liberty," and a motto of E Pluribus Unum, which means "Out of many, become one." These themes were historically taught and ought to be reinstated at all education levels, and they should resonate in the hearts and the minds of our children. Dividing ourselves according to skin color, turning schools into a social experiment instead of educational institutions, doesn't really reflect the guiding principles of the nation. So, I encourage that we teach our children gratitude. So I encourage that we teach our children gratitude, teach them that we are the freest nation on earth, and how we got to be this way. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, Psalm thirty-three. May God bless America and have mercy on us. Thank you very much.
Yolanda Hernandez?
Now that the twenty-two, twenty-three school year has come to a close, Love Our Children looks forward to the superintendent's annual report of discipline data. School Policy Forty-three oh three, Fair and Consistent Policy Administration, states, "Annually, the superintendent shall provide to the board a report of discipline data submitted to the North Carolina Department of Public Instru-- Instru-- Instruction. The data must be reported both in sys-- both system-wide and separately for each school, and must be disaggregated on the basis of race, ethnicity, gender, disability, English language learner status, and/or such other bases as the board may specify." Policy Forty-three oh three goes on to state, "If the data provided to the board reveals a pattern of discipline or disciplinary practices within or across schools that affects students disproportionately due to inconsistent discipline or disciplinary practices based on race, gender, ethnicity, disability, English laner-- English language learner status, or other personal characteristic, the superintendent shall present to the board any recommendations for changes to poli-- discipline policies or practices to reduce the potential for unjustifiable disproportionate outcomes." In May, Ms. Varnum reported to the New Hanover County Schools that have been reported that Saint-- that New Hanover Pa-- uh, New Hanover County Schools.
Thank you, Ms. Varnum. Your time is up. Thank you.
How about for a handicap?
Thank you. Robert Bellamy? Robert Bellamy? No, he's here. I saw him.
I'm here in support of Love Our Children and changing policy forty-three fifty-one. I really have nothing to say because people said it all in this song, nice song. But what is right, but people already know what is right and what is wrong. This world needs people who will just do the right thing. I have seen and lived so much wrong in my life, and today I can admit that. What I do know is people need basic common sense. No one has to be a genius to act like-- to act with a conscious mind. You know the facts, especially if someone or the system puts you in a position to make a change. You know the facts. You know you have a choice to make the right decision. It's up to you if you really want things to be better, to get better, and to make a better-- or a better life for those who depend on you. So make the right choice. That's why you are here. That's why you are who you are. We know you make-- I know some decisions are very hard, but you are taught to drive with either hand if you-- if you really have to. We just need you to put both hands on the steer wheel, both hands on the steering wheel when you're driving for the kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bellamy. Mahalani Cooper?
I just have a suggestion for the person who's calling the names to please speak with understanding because it appears as though those who are waiting to come up here and speak, most of us can't hear our names. I don't know if it's intentional, but most of us can't hear. Standing at this podium feels more like nineteen sixty-three because of the behaviors that are happening to folks who look like me. I stand for all children, and that's a fact, that this is a racist system and a disproportionate amount of students being suspended without their parents is Black. Policy four-three-five-one, it's time for it to be undone. We come here month after month pleading with a board that was elected to make changes for our children, and instead, we meet blank stares that put on their best poker faces. I just have a few quotes here. One is by Malcolm X. "How can anyone be against love?" I represent Love Our Children, but I don't feel any love coming from these cold stares, especially with what needs to be changed is not being changed. Also, to those listening out there, get your children out of these schools. As a collective, we can teach our children better than what's being done right now because we see what's being done, absolutely nothing. Malcolm X says, "That only a fool will allow for his enemy to teach his children. Wake up, Black America. Get our kids out."
Thank you. Kelly Kidwell?
I sent each of you an email yesterday outlining my concerns with removing stamps or any book from classrooms and libraries, and I will highlight two important points from that letter. First and most importantly, parents should have a choice in the education of their children and a seat at the table in decisions regarding their child's care and nurture. However, that position should be limited to their family. One or two parents should not be deciding what thousands of children have access to in schools and libraries. For the entire time I've been a teacher, any parent who objected to a particular text for their child has always been offered an alternate assignment. This is the reasonable and correct course of action. Why are we entertaining a new course? Doing this so infringes on the rights of all parents. Further, this course ignores the voice of trained educators. The members of the school and county MTAC committees who reviewed that text represented hundreds of years of experience and expertise. Additionally, the college board takes academic integrity seriously. Entertaining arbitrary and careless whims of parents who may object to certain texts or ideologies flies in the face of the stance. They state, quote, "As the AP program engages students in college-level work, this may include perspectives that could be considered controversial. This requires students to have a level of maturity and the skill to thoughtfully consider and analyze diverse perspectives. AP is animated by a deep respect for the intellectual freedom of teachers and students alike. If a school bans required topics from their AP courses, the AP program removes the AP designation from that course and its inclusion in the AP course ledger provided to colleges and universities." It is important to understand that if the school board decides to engage in censorship and banning of books and texts, the whole county could lose designation for AP courses being offered. I have thought for many months, as I've watched this process unfold, to its inevitable conclusion with a school board decision, what is motivating and driving the various parties in contention. I am being driven by my passion to see intellectual freedom, open conversation, and engagement with thought-provoking questions and topics as the only way to have authentic learning in schools. It is my sincere hope that we can be unified in the goal and in honoring of individual parents making decisions for individual children. Thank you.
Thank you to all the speakers tonight. Thank you very much for your time and for your passionate discussions. We, the board as a whole, have heard it and will listen very intently to everything that was said. At this point, I would like to move on to our next, uh, next agenda item. Thank you very much. There we go, which is closed session. Let me read this very quickly. The board, "I call for a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A one, three, and six to consider personnel matters and maintain the confidentiality of personnel records under North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash three nineteen through three twenty-one, and consult the board's attorney, and preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to consult the board's attorney"--okay, that says that twice-- in connection with the book review appeal, John Does one fourteen, one through fourteen versus New Hanover County Board of Education at all, nineteen CBS, two seven four five, and Jane Does one and two versus New Hanover County Board of Education at all, twenty CBS, one three nine five, and Jane Doe three versus New Hanover County Board of Education at all, twenty-one CBS, four seven zero seven. Consolidated matters. Do I hear such a motion?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. And we have a first and a second, a discussion. If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are on a closed session.
We're gonna go ahead and knock your back out. Okay, make that motion. All right, one, two, three, one, two, three, four, okay. We are back in open session. Hopefully, that did not take too long. We're gonna go ahead and carry on with our information. Click over here. Dr. Faison will be leading off for us with the E Academy. Dr. Faison?
Hello. So I want to just share that with the E Academy, we will be making just a minor change. If you, the E Academy is where our students are actually doing full-time virtual instruction. And they have been going to Mosley to get their orientation, pick up their devices. And when there are times that they need some support, they've been going to Mosley and the teachers at Mosley have been trying to provide that support. And I say trying because some of our students in the E Academy are also middle school students. So what we have decided for the E Academy is to have those students do those things at their home school. So our E Academy students again are about fifty-four this time, virtual students. And instead of them going to the E Academy, they will go to their home schools to get the orientation, pick up their device, and those check-ins. And when they need some support, they will receive them from their home school. We will do the initial district intake for the E Academy as a district. So it won't be, if I go to Hagerd, if I go to Hanover, I send my application there. The applications will still be done at the district level. This just allows us to do that connection and keep that connection with the school. And they do the support and the pickup at their home school. So we're gonna start that, educate and inform our parents about that minor change. And this way, we feel like our students will stay connected to their school and get better support. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions, board members? All right, Dr. Faison, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we'll have Dr. Faison. Sanitizing the instructional day.
All right. So I share with you guys during our agenda review that as a reminder, we had a couple of choices that we could do to make sure we were in line with our state guidelines. Because we were a few minutes short. Because we do not include recess as part of our instructional day. That's what the board decides. So we had basically the option of not following our own state and board guidelines or the state law, or a planned recess, which the board said they did not want to do that with teachers. Or what we've decided to do to add fifteen minutes of instruction to most of our elementary schools and standardize the day. So every elementary school will go from seven forty to two thirty-five. So that will give us six hours and fifty-five minutes, thirty minutes for recess, and twenty-five minutes for the required lunch, which leaves us with a total of six instructional hours. And I will take, and it does not change the teacher day. Our teachers, on average, report to work from seven to seven fifteen each day. So that will have no bearing on the time that they report to work or their time. So I will take any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Faison? Ms. Crayville?
This is for Eddie on that. How much earlier do the students or students have to?
It'll be a minimal impact because currently we're dropping off at most elementary schools as early as seven fifteen. Do, if they have double routes, or they may be doing double routes at that school or another route at another elementary school. So, you know, just minimal impact. At the most, yeah. We're, right now, we're evaluating that. And, but I don't see that, I don't see morning stop times changing that much. That's what we're more concerned with. And we've identified a few schools that we're, you know, gonna try to troubleshoot, make sure we can still make our secondary runs on time.
And thank you for that clarification, Dr. Faison, that our staff is not required any more time. Like, our staff will still be there. Just for clarification for our parents listening, are students gonna be allowed into the buildings earlier? Do you know that answer? Or is that a school-related issue?
That will be a school-by-school issue, but I'm pretty sure, most of our students, our schools open the doors about seven fifteen. So that, most parents, I would assume, will still drop off about there. The main thing we were concerned with was to make sure our teachers did not have to do anything extra. And if they themselves have to drop their own kids off, we're making sure each principal is working with them. Because we don't want it to impact them that way as well.
Yes, board members? If not, thank you, Dr. Faison. Actually, it lists you next, too. I'm not sure, pre-K district data. It should be Shannon, I believe.
This is actually Ms. Smiles will be taking.
Ms. Smiles, welcome.
Good evening, board members. And Superintendent Dr. Faust gives me great pleasure to have the space to share with you our last year's data. This is district pre-K data from this previous year. So to get started out, we are a three- and four-year-old program. We have nine public school sites and ten private sites. We are serving one thousand forty-seven students. So two years ago, we were serving nine hundred and eighteen children. Eight years ago, we were serving four hundred and fifteen children. And now, today, we are serving over a thousand students due to the partnership with our counties for allowing us the funding to grow as a program in the space. Now, we have over a thousand students accessing preschool with high-quality education and early intervention services. And how that happens is that starts with the board's support and senior leader's support. And Dr. Faust allowing us pre-K to be a grade level and equitable access as K through twelve. It starts with the community's support. It takes all of us to collaborate, include, and support, and provide tools to our teachers and our administrators to grow these children. So we are a comprehensive program. What does that mean? That's great news for your community because we have one point-of-entry application for New Hanover County. So we embed NC pre-K. We are the contracting administrator for the county, which means we manage that. We are county-funded slots due to our amazing partnership. And we are the grantee for the federal program for Head Start. And we also apply for supplemental funds from a Smart Start grant to make this happen. We are curriculum-driven. We are required by the state to use an approved evidence-based curriculum, which is creative curriculum. And it is in alignment with the North Carolinian Standard Course of Studies. It's comprehen, it's comprehensive, it's content-rich, age-appropriate, and rigorous alongside with social, emotional, and cognitive development. We also use enhancement tools due to the support of our school district. Letters required by the state for literacy, fundations, hegemony, literacy support provided by our school district, along with Eureka Math, which makes us in alignment with our K friends. We also implement conscious discipline strategies to help with those social, emotional children to help self-regulate with challenging behaviors. In alignment with an evidence-based curriculum, we have a formative assessment that matches the objectives of creative curriculum. So this allows us to do data collection and progress monitoring of our students from the beginning to the end of the year. We are mandated by six learning domains, as you see, social, emotional, physical, language, cognitive, literacy, mathematics. So this data from this formative assessment that is connected to your curriculum, what does it do? It shows us what children can do and what skills are missing. It informs instruction. It provides steps to mastery growth for new skills. Informs professional development and PLCs. I am proud to present to you the overall wide expectations data. And as you can see by the purple, that's good news. In alignment with New Hanover County School's strategic plan, we held ourselves accountable to increase the number of pre-K students meeting or exceeding age expectations in teaching strategies objectives formative assessment with North Carolina Early Learning Inventory to seventy-five percent. The North Carolina Early Learning Inventory is entry for kindergarten. And I am so proud to share with you and happy we're doing it. As you can see, beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year, what our children look like coming into the year, in the middle of the year, and when they leave us. The objectives are found at the bottom. So manages feelings, follows limits' expectations, responds to emotional cues, interacts with peers, problem solves, so self-regulation, knowing simple directions, responding and playing well with our friends. We have another learning domain, cognitive approaches to learning with physical, okay? Again, meeting or exceeding our seventy-five percent goal in our strategic plan. So what does that look like? So for with cognitive and approaches to learning, so very curious, they're ready to learn, they contribute to conversations with their friends, they talk among each other during play, during center time. And then, when you look at uses fingers and hands, we can cut straight lines, okay? We can unbutton our jackets, our zippers. Very important with youngest learners in New Hanover County schools. Language and literacy, again, very promising data. So what does that look like for our first objective? They can follow simple directions. Important in kindergarten. They can retell a story with details. Very impressive. They can fill in missing rhyming words. It's amazing to see. If you want to see it in action, please come see us. So words begin with the same letters. My name begins with the same letter as my friend. So we know features of the book, the front, the back, left to right, authors, how to hold the book. Cognitive and mathematics, counting. You can count to twenty. We know that numbers have a quantity, so that three means something. We know more and less. We know patterns. We are connecting the numbers to quantities. I have six buttons, and I need four more to make ten buttons. That's what we're doing. Looking forward and moving on, what we're gonna do is even better. We are going to enhance our support systems. We are gonna increase our data dives. We've scheduled administrative meetings, one-on-one, site levels, within principals' meetings. And we're providing PD focused on the data based on our survey results of what the needs are. We know literacy and math, we can grow. We're gonna focus on authentic assessments with fidelity. Letting this happen naturally and organically and measuring those in more frequency, not right before the checkpoint due dates. And we're going to support our core curriculum. We need to see our core come alive in order to continue to grow these young learners. Any questions or comments?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Walker?
Thank you very much for that. I had a question about demand. We've got a thousand and forty-seven filled. So when people apply, were there not enough slots for people applying?
Okay, so excellent question. So we are an eligibility program. So you have to be aged three and four and meet those risk factors. We have limited slots because our state is not universal preschool as of yet. So we are maintaining a wait list for this upcoming school year. We're asking for grace and patience. We have a new team, a dynamite team, and we're making that happen right now. But we're receiving acceptance letters ongoing and filling those slots.
Okay, so is the waitlist a lot?
So last year, we ended with eighty.
Eighty on the waitlist.
As a program director, that was alarming to me because I had to look closer at the data and it's mainly three-year-olds and a lot of them over income. Why do we put over income on a waitlist? Because we want to keep them close to us. Because as you saw at the beginning of the slide, we have multiple programs. So we want to keep them in our pockets. Hopefully, they get placed in a four-year-old program this upcoming year.
Ms. Mason?
I just had a question about the social, emotional data with the meeting or exceeding expectations. Having a child with autism, I know that some of these things are really challenging for even kids this age. Are those students, if you have any, that have even a propensity for autism? Are those students also making progress in these, in these goals?
Well, I'm glad to share with you that our standard course of study and our curriculum embed strategies for students of those special needs. And we have over thirty percent program-wide with IEPs. Early Intervention is happening.
Barnhart?
Thank you. Ms. Smiles, my question is just because we've had awesome conversations and I just wanted you to share with the board. You and I have talked about our priority preschools are our elementary sites. So can you share with the board what we're doing to not only support our pre-K centers, but also the expansion of those courses, of those classes on, throughout our district at the different elementary schools and what we're doing to help support those staff?
Okay, so we have three large pre-K centers. And what Ms. Barnes is referencing is the last two years, we've increased our population in our elementary schools. So what we see are administrators with a pre-K five caseload, not just a preschool caseload. So what we are doing is we're individualizing and looking at our survey data for those elementary principals and teachers and also partnering up and collaborating with PLCs and getting some investment in building that capacity among those elementary schools, increasing our site visits and increasing our request for support.
Ms. Cravill?
Approximately, how many kids do we have in a class? Do we have limits like we do in, you know, K one, two?
Yes, in New Hanover County Schools preschool, we are very high quality. We do not put any more than eighteen students per classroom. The younger, the less. So we average between fifteen to seventeen for our three-year-olds.
And then the same for four-year-olds or?
Four-year-olds will not exceed eighteen.
Any other questions, board members? If not, Ms. Smiles, thank you very much for that great presentation.
Thank you so much for your continued support.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon. At this point, we will call, just for a change, Dr. Fason. International School at Gregory.
This is another update. So Gregory is our Spanish immersion school, of course. And what we want to do is to actually look at how do we make sure our students are leaving there fluently in Spanish? And with our elementary program, it is fifty-fifty. So they receive part of their instruction in Spanish and fifty percent and fifty percent in English. But in our middle school, the only time that you actually get the Spanish is during the electives. So what we will be doing this year is we have, we're going to have the students who are there take the electives in Spanish. Let me back up. The sixth and eighth graders have been allowed to choose electives and they can go to Williston to take electives. So they can not have Spanish electives and not be receiving Spanish. So what we will be doing, the seventh and eighth-grade parents have been told, they were told last year, that we will continue to allow that for those parents. Those parents will still be able to allow their children to go to Williston to receive music and it was basically music for additional elective. But after this, I mean, after that, the sixth graders that we currently have will remain at Gregory to do the electives that they have because that way they will have some electives in Spanish. So at Gregory, they have RPE and CTE, but they also have two electives, Global Studies and Connections. And those electives are taught fully in Spanish. So instead of those middle schoolers not receiving Spanish instruction during their middle school years, they will still remain engrossed in the Spanish classes. So again, I just want to repeat that our seventh and eighth graders, we're going to continue because we told those parents that. But starting with our sixth graders, they are going to understand and the parents are going to be informed that we're truly going to move to the emerging model and make sure that their children have Spanish in middle school as well as in English. Now, we do have any parents who choose not to remain, we will give them those options of going back to their homeschool. But we do not have a lot of students who do music. We had about twelve students in sixth grade and none that elected to do it in seventh and eighth. So we're not talking a lot of students, but the impact of what they can gain is great. And the last thing, we will also be making sure that they take the Apple test, which is the language test. And when they take that test, they will get a high school credit for the Spanish. And they can get as much as Spanish one and Spanish two. We have about twenty-seven students who receive that credit this year. And we hope to have more to get Spanish one and even more, more to get, some of them get Spanish two because they'll be getting Spanish more in the middle school. I know I've said a lot, so I'll take some questions. If you have any.
Any questions? Nope, nope. Thank you, Dr. Fason.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it. Next, we have Zello, Dr. Edge, and Mr. Nixon, please. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Demarcus Nixon. I'm the Work-Based Learning Coordinator for Career and Technical Education. And tonight, it's a privilege to be able to speak to you all about Zello, a platform that we've been using in the district for college and career readiness.
Hi, my name is Dr. Veronica Edge. I'm the Supervisor of Secondary School Council and Student Records for New Hanover County Schools. In this presentation, our primary goal is to introduce Zello to the community and the school board. We are excited about sharing how we're currently utilizing Zello within our school district and our plans to implement it extensively for grades six through eight next year.
So a brief introduction of Zello. Zello is previously known as Career Cruising. It's a software-based platform where students use it as a valuable tool for career exploration and planning. Through this platform, students explore various college and career options while developing a comprehensive career development plan. In our district, students have access to Zello through single sign-on using the NCAED Cloud Portal. And by having this resource within our district, we experience several advantages. Firstly, it enhances student support by streamlining processes and procedures. Secondly, Zello enables us to better align our college and career readiness goals, ensuring that our students are well-prepared for their future endeavors. And lastly, it equips our students with essential skills and knowledge necessary for achieving success in the future. There's three key areas that Zello supports for our students, and that's career development, work-based learning, and course planning. In the career development sector of Zello, students in grades six through twelve will develop a comprehensive career development plan by using interactive lessons and assessments. And they will gain better understanding of their unique interests, skills, and strengths. The work-based learning platform is specific to CTE students, where CTE students will be able to explore work-based learning opportunities such as internships, job shadows, and field trips. They will have easy access to local company profiles and opportunities that are available locally.
Course planning, students will use Zello to create a four-year course plan, which serves as an actionable roadmap that combines career and academic options to develop personalized plans. This plan provides parents and students with a clear path for their future goals, outlining their courses needed for graduation and course planning information. Zello works in conjunction with Power School, which is our informational technology system. But Power School is an authoritative source, allowing students and parents to view their completed graduation requirements and see their remaining courses.
All right, so all of you shared some demo accounts. But we're just going to walk you through the student experience for Zello. So the first part of that is the career development platform. So students will utilize this platform to complete their comprehensive career development plans. They will complete this by grade seven and then it will be updated in grades ten. As part of the process, students will engage in interactive lessons and assessments. And the first assessment that students will take is called Matchmaker. And this assessment consists of thirty-nine questions like the ones shown on the screen. And it prompts students to think critically about their interests and rank them on a scale ranging from like very much to dislike very much. These questions are then evaluated to output their career matches. Some sample questions may be like, do students like working outside or they like certain subjects in school, et cetera. But after the students complete the Matchmaker assessment, they gain access to an array of career and college options, all of which are aligned to their assessment results. The second assessment that students will take is a personality styles assessment. This assessment will allow students to gain insights into their personality traits. It's based on the Holland Model and it's twenty-eight questions, similar to the previous assessment, where students rank their prompts from like very much to dislike very much. And then the final assessment is called Missions Complete. It's a forty-nine-question assessment that's thought-provoking questions that delve further into the student's interest. And questions are designed to provoke reflection and exploration of the student's passions and aspirations. So once the students complete those assessments, they then have access to a broader range of college and career options available, available for them to explore. And this slide just shows how students can save top career choices that will be uploaded to their digital portfolio that will be shareable for them when, at the end of their career development plannings.
In course planning, students can make future plans, which will help them increase their future plans by being enrolled, enlisted, or employed. We want to help students solidify their E. So when they graduate from New Hanover County Schools, we will be with the end in mind. In addition, this can also, they can also set personal goals, short-term or long-term goals for themselves to increase their successful outcome. The course planner shows the students' parents, students and parents, the courses the students have completed, including the grade and the credit they've earned. In addition, it allows the students to plan their future courses for the remainder of their high school career. This is also a great tool for school counselors, career development coordinators, students and parents alike, as we are all collaborating partners to ensure that students graduate successfully and on time. The dropdown shows the credits that the students have earned and the remaining credits that the student needs to graduate per the graduation requirements.
So the CTE program in collaboration with student support, we developed a scoping sequence that will be shared with school staff, students, and parents at the beginning of the school year. We will be meeting with secondary school principals at the Leadership Institute to decide on a school-wide implementation plan for each individual school. Professional development is going to be offered for school staff during the fall semester. Parents will receive information about the Zello Family Portal during fall, open house. And additional training resources such as the Zello Academy and YouTube channel is accessible for anyone via the CTE website as well as the New Hanover County Schools website.
Zello provides resources to students, families, and educators alike so they can learn about Zello, how they can best use it, and understand how we can help students, whether they, for their future plans, to ensure that they are enrolled, enlisted, and employed. And do you have any questions for us?
Board members, any questions? Ms. Barnhart?
I just want to say I'm very excited about this. When I first got on, on the board, I know I wanted to help out with the District Career Fair and I started talking about how we need to have some vertical alignment and then accessibility to our parents so that they're informed of all the options that New Hanover County Schools offer. But also, they're equipped with how to prepare their students to get into a career field that they are passionate about, that we have courses for. And so I think this is awesome. I'm glad that it's already in our budget, so we're paying for it and that we're going to be able to better utilize this to able to support our parents, but with the partnership of having a progress for our kids. So thank you for the hard work you're doing and I'm excited to continue to see it roll out.
Thank you, Ms. Barnhart. Ms. Walker?
So thank you for this. I, I think you said it was new or was not new, but I like the look of it because as a person that has a planner and likes to be organized, I have to see it. And I think when I went through college, it was a, it was a very big task to figure out what I needed to take next and what would fit with the degree I was going for. And I remember as a kid in New Hanover County, we used to do some stuff like this probably early on where and it made you feel like, okay, I'm figuring out what I want to do. And it kind of saves time with, I wouldn't say wasting time because it's never a waste of time, but sometimes we don't really know what our personality is suited for. So I think this is a very, very helpful tool and I appreciate you guys bringing it to us.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions for you guys, of course. So I, I heard you say that the CTE, only the CTE students are going to be eligible for internships. Is there a reason why we wouldn't want any of our students to be able to get internships?
So the work-based learning component of it, so CTE students get a CTE internship credit. So that's how we have it in New Hanover County Schools, that CTE students get the internship credit. So that's why the work-based learning component is only available for CTE students.
Okay. The, is there, I didn't see in here that I, I thought we had, had talked about at one point, is there a place for students to upload their accolades, their, their, and I, where in, in, as I'm going in and learning more, where would I find that?
In your About Me, there's a strip that's called like the Timeline.
Okay.
And then you can upload all your awards and achievements.
Yeah, so because kids, when they're ready for college, they're going to go, I forgot that I did that. You know, a mom will pull out her folder and say that, you remember when you did that? The, yeah. So, and the other thing too, is this something that Zello can be part of the Parent Academy? You know, just even though there's a parent component on here, you know, I can see it as part of the Parent Academy, you know, in, in the beautiful room that we have to do that so that parents can learn more and follow along and, yeah, be an active part of that. Thank you. This is awesome. It's going to be great.
I love this. My question is, once they've taken this assessment, and we know kids, they change their minds. And maybe they get into this course of study and they decide, this is not what I want to do. Do they retake the assessment? How does that all work?
So in the scoping sequence, they do have opportunities where their, where students can go in and update their assessment results and get new, new results. And so with that, then the counselor and career development coordinator will sit down with those students to work out their four-year plan or adjust their four-year plan. It's just a plan, it's not authoritative schedule for the students.
Mason? Ms. Robinson, see me?
I've just got to ask about, the counselors had access to this, so when they were talking to the students, they could bring this in immediately.
Any other board members? I want to thank you both for this. It was great, very exciting, very, very exciting. Thank you very much. We're going to continue with New Hanover County Beginning Teacher Support Plan. Dr. Barnes and Dr. O'Brien.
Good evening, Board Chair and Board Vice Chair.
Good evening, Board Chair and Board Vice Chair, Dr. Faust and other board members. We're here tonight to share with you updates on the New Hanover County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program Plan for your approval. You saw it at the agenda review. The state requires us to have a plan that provides support for our beginning teachers in the first three years of employment. As you can see, we've got a comprehensive plan with multiple layers of support for all of our beginning teachers. We serve approximately 300 teachers right now in their first three years. I'd like to introduce Dr. Kim O'Brien, who is the wonderful supporter of our Beginning Teacher Support Program.
Good evening. It is a delightful time to be able to share with you tonight about our Beginning Teacher Support Program. The state requires us, as Dr. Barnes says, to have a plan, and this plan was originally approved in 2020. The revisions that we want to make is that we are seeing evidence of a change in our beginning teacher population. We are seeing more teachers that are working and being hired with untraditional licensure. And so they come in with an expertise, but yet they have not gone through a traditional educational background program. So they are in the process of taking courses or getting their GPAs up, so that they are in the process of becoming licensed in education as well. So what we are trying to do in the addendums that we've made to this program, this plan, is that we want to continue to increase that support, adding an additional layer for that population of teachers. We had 21% of our beginning teachers last year that were teaching with a specialized license. So this new structure and how we've made these revisions to our plan will allow us to support them with some teaching practices, best teaching practices, as well as with the curriculum. So currently, we have 15 pre-K teachers that are working in this licensure program, 20 middle-school teachers, and 25 high-school teachers. So in past, we had seen it more at the secondary level, but we're now seeing it pre-K 12. So we know that investing in our beginning teachers really definitely impacts student learning, so we want to make sure that they have all the levels of support that they need. Thank you. Any questions about the plan?
This will probably continue to increase rather than, it's a short-term solving a problem. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Exactly right.
So a beginning teacher is one through three years?
Correct.
And are our beginning teachers all still assigned a mentor to help them, other than someone from central office?
Correct.
They have, like, in their building, someone is assigned to them to help them do?
What we have are three beginning support coordinators who also go out to the schools and provide additional support and help a new teacher filter all the information they're getting. They check them on licensure, make sure they're completing their assignments, and helping them through the Beginning Teacher Program, which is required for them to get a continuing license at the end.
Other questions? No? Thank you, Dr. O'Brien. Thank you, Dr. Barnes.
I'd like to say that I know that we talk a lot about retention and the concern about making sure that we have teachers. We have retained more than 85% of our beginning teachers last year who returned this year. That's how we fix a concern about retention, is you train them up correctly, you give them the support they need. So I'd like to say that that's a real accolade for them as well.
Can I ask one last question?
Yes, ma'am.
About how many students, I mean, teachers, do we have back with us in the ILT, the Beginning Teacher Program that are from the scholarships?
I'll have to get that.
Okay. It's not a lot if we don't give out that many, but...
Right. It's interesting, we actually had a second-year scholarship recipient who had just finished her first year, come back and do some training with our first-year people coming in new.
With our year-round, we just started their BT1 orientation, and we had a board scholar that came back and presented to them. A great presentation. So a great model for them to learn from.
Okay, next we have North Carolina General Assembly Legislative Long Session Overview. Ms. Vogel? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, if I will, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this discussion until after session has ceased at the state level and the legislative committee is able to meet. I've already, and I'll wait for a second before I go.
Okay, so your motion is to postpone?
To postpone this discussion until after session is over and legislative committee has an opportunity to meet. I'll second that.
First and a second. I do believe that takes a two-thirds vote to change at this point, correct?
No, majority.
It's a majority. Okay, so a majority. So we have a first to postpone the discussion of the North Carolina General Assembly Legislative Long Session Overview, for first, a second. At this point, we would entertain any discussion. Ms. Cravill?
Yeah, I was interested in having this because July 1st was kind of our drop-dead date. At the NCSBA conference, Michael Lee came and gave us some updates, and the NCSBA gave us some updates. So I would just like to see where we are now, so that we can like start doing, you know, putting our arms around what's happening in there. So I don't think there's any reason for us to postpone it till we're done. I mean, it's just an update on where we are.
Other discussion? Ms. Walker?
I guess I didn't see this originally on our agenda, but I agree, I would be happy to hear an update. I mean, I read it in the news, but we're supposed to get legal updates, especially on bills that are going to substantially potentially change a lot, and I don't know why we have to put it off. What are we waiting for? Veto overrides? I don't know. I mean, I think there are updates that we should be aware of right now.
And the other discussion? Ms. Barnhart?
I mean, I will add that there has been some changes and movements of different things, and I have attended some of the NCSBA overhaul and the crossover bill, and even in there, they said, this is all still, even though it's passed through the Senate and it's onto the House or vice versa, it's not a finalized document. So we're going to sit here with an overview of things that may or may not happen when we can wait a month and be actually informed of the changes that are actually happening versus speculating about them, so that's why.
The other discussion?
And I would agree with Ms. Barnhart. It is extremely fluid right now, and there's just, I mean, it'd be a snapshot for this minute, but tomorrow, everything could change. A lot of things could change, so we really need to wait till they're done doing their jobs, so then we see what we have to work with.
And just, Ms. Cravill?
I'll just use my second time. I'm going to use the budget as an example. If we sat around and waited for the budget to get approved before we talked about what the budget might look like, then we would still be sitting, you know, a year later. So to use that analogy, you know, that is, I think is inappropriate, but just wanted to talk.
Any else? All right, so we have a first and a second to delay the discussion, postpone it until...
Until after session's over and legislative committee.
Okay, and what date is session over? Do we know?
That is the magic question.
Okay, that's the magic question. Okay. All right, so we don't know when it will be. There's no certain date. No certain date. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll, because it seems like it's going to be one of those discussions?
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Cravill?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Ms. Rickmanus?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Mr. Bodebor.
Yes. So it is delayed. We will carry on. That passes 5-2 consideration. So next we have consensus items. That is A through S. I think we had a couple we have to pull off.
Did we postpone that? Did we table that? Or...
It was postponed.
Until after session is over.
Okay, so postpone, what does that mean?
It's postponed to a definite time, and the definite time was in the motion to when the session is concluded.
Okay.
Okay. I believe we had some, as I remember, I could be wrong, that we had a couple that we needed to pull off with the consensus items. Is that correct? You have any of those? Yes, Ms. Mason?
I need to pull off I, and I had a question about Q.
Okay, so we'll pull off I, and the question about Q is?
My question about Q, I was looking through it, and I may have missed it on the other one. I saw that there were individualized plans. I wanted to just confirm they were separate from IEPs, and that parental involvement was there, and that those were shared with staff.
Those are definitely separate from IEPs. Those are individualized education plans for disabilities, and these services don't correlate to disability services. And they are definitely shared with parents. Parents have to consent to those being created.
Okay, does that answer your question? Okay, Ms. Bradford?
In those three memorandums of understanding with Q, R, and S, Ms. Farnham, are you able to tell us the effectiveness of those programs?
So I'm looking online. Is it P, Q, and R?
Q, R, and S.
So S is different. I'm looking at...
It's P online, if not on our agenda, it's different.
Oh.
P, Q, R.
Yes, yes.
Port City United.
So data analysis is underway, and we've had many community collaboration discussions between the agencies regarding the effectiveness, being that the data has been collected for a partial year of implementation. That's going to be really important to progress monitor to determine overall effectiveness.
When did it begin?
So the funding and hiring, it was in place just after the beginning of the 22-23 school year, and the MOUs were being put into place, so the partnership sort of evolved, and the tasks and the roles of the staff evolved into the 22-23 school year. So the analysis would be moving forward with, we've got baseline information, and now looking at progress monitoring.
So when do you think we'll be able to have any idea?
I would like to be able to look at progress monitoring data in the next couple of months as an analysis of the 22-23 school year, and I can say that we've already had really good collaboration with Port City United on different ways to refer students, who referrals come through, and the types of characteristics we're looking for in the referrals. So we have already been engaging in some continuous improvement efforts collaboratively.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Walker?
Well, I just had a comment, because I know Port City United is a division of the county government, so, I mean, we should be collaborating with them anyway. And I know it's still fairly new, and I know they're still trying to work things out. So I think this was already on our agenda at the agenda review, or no? Was this stuff already on here? Well, then, we probably should have just asked questions then, and we still can, and I think we can access them on the phone as well.
Ms. Walker, they weren't posted at the agenda review. They weren't all posted. They were, and the wrong versions were posted.
I was wondering if these were.
Inadvertently, the wrong versions were posted.
Thought it was there. Okay.
Can I ask one quick clarifying question for S with the Wilmington Chamber of Career and Leadership Development Academy? Does our MOU allow for growth of that program as it's written? Because currently, we serve about 40 students in our seventh grade in the academy through the partnership with the chamber. I'm asking if how the MOU is written allows for growth to serve more than the students we're currently serving.
We are planning to do all of our students starting the summer of this year. I would actually have to go back and make sure it doesn't say anything about not allowing for expansion, because we are expanding this year, because last year, we only did one cohort, and this year, we're doing two. So the plan has always been to grow the program so we can actually serve all the students in the district.
All right, at this point, I'm going to make a motion to...
Ms. Whittle, I have to pull myself. I think we have to vote. I can't vote on the...
Which one?
Letter P.
P?
P, for the MOU with Port City United and communities and schools.
Okay, so...
It's Q on ours.
On, online...
No, no, it's P. Yeah, on the paper, maybe, but on the thing, it's P. It's P. All right, so we'll pull I and P. I will make a motion that we accept all the consensus items with the exceptions of I and P.
Second.
We have a second. Chairman, did Ms. Mason ask to pull Q as well? No? I and P only? Thank you. Yes, thank you, sir. So we have a first and a second. Any discussion? If not all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I further make a motion, we accept I, and, well, I said we have them separately.
Do it separately.
Yeah, I. Do I hear a second?
Second.
A second, Ms. Barnhart? Any discussion? No, she said... Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes 6-0. And then I also make a motion, we accept P. Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
It's Q. Oh, no, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry.
On here, it's P.
You're right, sorry.
Okay. Yep, P.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any discussion? Do it right? Okay. If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, again, passes 6-0. Moving on, we have the policy amendments. Ms. Barnhart?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the policy amendments as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 7-0. We carry on with a new business, a book review appeal process for stamped.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to hear the Gates stamp book appeal.
We have a motion to accept, or to hear the Gates appeal. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Mason. Discussion. Ms. McManus?
If we are going to hear banning a book, and am I correct, we've had one individual that has raised the question to ban a book? We're talking about an AP class, fans placement, the kids who most likely will be the leaders of the immediate future, who need to know how other people feel and how to write, how to document. We don't have to agree. There are many books that I don't agree with or would like for my family to read, but we don't need to start a precedent to ban books. I don't want to be a member of a group that agrees to ban books, which will affect our AP teachers across the whole system, and then filter down to honor classes and filter down to what's part of what we do every day, is expose kids to everything so they can make good, mature decisions when they get older. So I disagree and hope that when I pass, this is monumental, I hope monumental.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. Ms. Mason?
This vote is on actually just hearing the appeal. This is not on actually doing anything with the book but hearing the appeal, and I honestly need to have more information. I read through the book. I read the entire book, cover to cover, all of it. There were things I definitely disagreed with, there were things that I had issue with, but I'm not basing what I'm saying on this, and you can believe me or not believe me. But I did some more research other than that. I looked at the syllabus, and I looked actually online at other AP syllabuses across the country just to see what the standard is, because the reading level of that book is actually middle school to high school. If this is an AP course, we want to raise the standard for our kids. We can have differing opinions and still hear varying authors, but this particular, and some of the other ones, I actually did look into some of the other books on the list as well, they are also at a middle school through high school reading level. So when I went through and looked to the other syllabuses that are available online, what I noticed was that there were much more rigorous content in there, including but not limited to George Orwell, even, hang on, Malcolm X was in some of it. So I am not against having differing viewpoints, but I am against having lower standards for our kids, and if the reading level is not at the standard that our kids need it to be at, we're not doing the best for them.
Ms. Walker?
So this is obviously not about agreeing or disagreeing with the content. We should be trusting our professionals, first of all, and second of all, this has gone through two layers. Third of all, and probably fourth, fifth, and sixth, is the student was given an exception. No student was forced to read this book. But at some point, we have to, as a board, back up our district and the decisions they make, and if we... as a board, back up our district and the decisions they make. And if we, which I think is a foregone conclusion, I mean, we can have little semantic arguments about whether we think the syllabus is good, or whether we think that it's, you know, on gray level or whatever. But the fact is, if we have a hearing on this book, and it gets banned, this is a very bad precedence that we start in this county. And I will add also that we already have a county in South Carolina that's getting sued over removing this book. So, I think we need to be very, very careful about how we deal with this situation going forward. I don't think it warrants us having a hearing over it. I do not think that, you know, I don't think that we are at a point where we, we want to have a circus and pull apart a book and our teachers in front of everyone, because that's what's going to happen if we hold a hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Ms. Barnhart?
When the idea and concept of discussing curriculum selection, which is our job, that's ultimately what we approve, is our job, and as a district, we have gone to streamlining curriculum and content. We just approved the new reading curriculum. When this book first came to me, it was an AP college course. So, I said, okay, you know, Josie, this is what you got to do. When you're looking at this through the lens of that, okay. Do you know where my book came from? Castle Lane Elementary School? So, when I was looking at the procedures and the process of how we select things, how can a book that's college level be the same, in our district, as how our procedures and policies are written, be the same as a kindergarten content? I think that's, there's discrepancies there. So, as I was reflecting on this book and the content, not here to decide that, because when you look at a scope and sequence of a class, it's about well-rounded viewpoints. So, whatever viewpoint this is, then the teacher would have another alternative viewpoint as well. That's part of how you build your curriculum. That's how you build your structure. But to me, I have concerns with how we're building the selection process in general if indeed this is a college-level course and an elementary book. So, I have issues from questioning whether our procedures are where they should be at this point, and that's where my thought process to hear the appeal is coming from, because they can't be the same.
Ms. Crable?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, we're here to decide, should we hear the appeal. So, comments made about other books, you know, should not even be part of the discussion, I don't feel with that. The, I have taken college-level English classes where we do talk about very simple books, because you're looking at the way things are written, you're looking at the underlying, you know, Dr. Seuss, you know, we had to take away some of his books, or some people think we have to take away some of his books. There's a lot of books that are not written at a college level, that you can still study in a college-level English class. So, to that point. But back to Ms. Walker's point, is we go through a very rigorous hiring process, looking for the best teachers. And, and we promote people from within who rise to our standards. And if we are going to not appreciate their, their wisdom, their expertise, the college classes that they took in order to get where they are, in favor of some community members who think that they know more than our educators know, I'm having, I'm having a problem with that, you know. And same with Mr. McManus. We're allowing, we could be allowing one parent whose child didn't even read the book, the, the opportunity to deny the experience from 8,900 other high school students, equal number of middle school students, and there might be some fifth graders who are very interested in this, you know, because their families are interested in it, and they read it together as a family, you know. So, who are we to decide? So, I don't even think, huh? The school system should have a variety of books available to all students, and, and parents get to choose what their kids read. We don't get to choose what every student reads. I don't believe that is in our purview of doing that. So, I don't think that we need to have a hearing. We need to trust the people that we hired to do the work. Dr. Faust, all the way down, you know, to his classroom teachers. I think we need to entrust their integrity, their expertise, their willingness to broaden students' minds, and let them make their own choices on these kind of things. You know, who are we to make those choices for, for all parents? I just don't think that we should.
Thank you, Ms. Crable.
In the seven to eight months I've been on this board, every appeal that we've been presented with, we've heard. It's what we do back there in that room. Sometimes, we're hearing appeals. Regardless of the matter, we voted to hear both sides of the argument presented to us as a board, and we made a decision to either uphold the decision of the school district or not. This case is no different. A parent's request is working itself through due process. Like all those other appeals, we should hear this one, and then make a decision based on the arguments presented during that appeal.
Mr. McManus?
I would remind all of us that our librarians, and if I remember correctly, those who go through the different levels, starting at the bottom, going through the schools, going through all of the schools, approved and supported this book. Because once you start banning, then the, you'll be asked to ban more. Once you do it, no matter what. And that's, I'm not agreeing with the book or disagree with the book. I'm against banning books, and once you start, you can't stop it. And everyone has a right to be educated if they so choose to read other than what individual board members think they should. Thank you.
All right. We have a first, a sec. Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand up. I didn't see your hand up, sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. I will, I will just, oh.
My mic on for me. I would just say also, this is, we do have appeals and hearings, but they are typically personnel, and they are typically, you know, student-related. This is a discretionary appeal. We do not have to hear this. This is unprecedented in this county, as far as I'm aware. And if anybody knows different, please tell me. But I don't think that we need to hear this. This is not a have-to hear. Banning books, in my opinion, is an un-American thing to do. We have a constitution. We all took an oath to, and I will say it again, because I've said it more than once sitting up here, about what we swore to when we took this office. We should not be doing this. It's not our job. Our job is top level. It's policy. It's whatever, but it's not doing this. And so, if we, even if a small group of us, we do this hearing, and we decide in a majority to ban a book, that is wrong, and we should not be doing it. So, I disagree that we should have this hearing.
Okay, we have a first, and we'll check one more time. Okay, first and second. Ms. Bowie, would you, again, the motion in front of us is to grant Ms. Gates's appeal, or hearing, excuse me. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebore?
Yes.
And Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Passes four three. So, now we have our second discussion, which is how to have the hearing, whether we want to do a book, excuse me, a document review, or if we want to do a full hearing.
Mr. Wildebore?
Ma'am?
I'd like to make a motion that the hearing be on the documents that Dr. Faust has already shared with us, which include the report from the school-based MTAC and the district MTAC.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Crable. Do we hear a second?
Second.
That's Ms. Walker for a second. Discussion. Bradford?
I respectfully disagree. Every appeal I've heard had two people, two sides, whether it was an attorney, or the school district. We had the arguments presented to us in person, and we made a decision based on that. We all can read documents, but to hear the presentation from the school district as to why they made this decision, and to hear from Ms. Gates as to why she's making this appeal would be important to me. In addition to providing due process for her, I look forward to better understanding this dual districts committees' process for a book, because right now, I don't really understand it, exactly who's in there, who's doing what, and how it's done. And so, what happened before the appeal stage, I'd like to better understand it. So, that's why I'd like to see us do it, not with the free-for-all of five different people speaking on each side, but one, no more than two people speaking for each side, so that we have all the information, and then we make an informed decision based on that.
Ms. Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we all, as board members, can call up the appropriate divisions and ask them how the process works. We don't need a hearing for that. What's going to happen is, is going to, this is, seems to me like this is going to be a circus. It's going to be, let's show how much New Hanover County, you know, wants to hear one person's idea of why they don't want to book in this district. And I don't believe that is what this hearing is meant to do. If we are looking at the evidence that the district is, is going to present to us about why they decided to uphold keeping the book, then I think that is the appropriate way we do it. We don't turn it into a free-for-all. And everybody, this is not, this is not a courtroom. This is the Board of Education, and we are making a decision on whether to ban a book or not. That's exactly what it comes down to. And I feel like this perhaps is something that some people want to see. And I don't want to see it. Obviously, I voted against it in the first place.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Crable?
I'd like to ask Mr. Vogel a question. So, to Ms. Bradford's point, that she wants to learn more about the process, that's not what we're here to decide. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, I raised a question privileged. Are you going to let her attack me?
I'm not. I'm asking a question based on a comment that you made. Are we allowed? That's my question, Mr. Chair.
I think that if there were to be a live hearing, that the presentations would probably include a summary of what happened at the school level, how the decision was made, what happened at the district level, how the decision was made. So, I think there likely would be an explanation, a summary, a recitation of the process and how we got to where we are today. That's, that's likely. But that would be up to the individuals who are presenting.
All right. We have a first and a second. Ms. Bowie, would you please, again, the motion in front of us is to hear the document only, and not a full hearing. Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Wildebore?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Crable?
Yes.
So, that is defeated, three to four.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am?
I make a motion that we... Thank you. That we hear the appeal with both sides presenting. I, I don't want to say one person each side, but no more than two, and we hear it in person.
We have a motion. Yes.
Can I amend that to make a time limit to...
Oh, yes, please.
I mean, or if you want to amend it, just...
Yes, I actually had that in there. For each side to have no more than, say, 20 minutes to present their sides.
I would second that.
We have a first and a second. I would like to see if you will amend that to one person. I don't think we need to have two or more.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, one person from each.
Could you, could you read that again, what we're voting on here?
I make a motion that we have a live healing, healing, hearing appeal with one person presenting for each side, presumably Ms. Brinson and Ms. Gates, or if Ms. Gates chooses an attorney. And we limit the time to 20 minutes each side.
Okay, and we have a first and a second on that. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Bowie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Wildebore?
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand up.
So, it wasn't up. It just went up right when you were saying, call it. So, Ms. Bradford had made a point on if Ms. Gates chooses to bring legal counsel. So, do we need to put that in the motion, so that if one side brings legal counsel, then the other side has legal counsel?
Mr. Vogel?
No, I don't think that's required for the motion. I mean, that, those could be in procedures that you, as a board, and me, as your representative, will make clear to both Mrs. Gates and the school district, that there, Ms. Gates is entitled to have counsel and provide us notice, provide the school district notice in a number of days before the hearing, so that the school district can choose to have counsel if it wants to have.
Okay.
So, then I would like to amend the motion to include everything that Ms. Bradford said, and that you said, but that we have a procedure lined up before we go into the hearing.
Well, that would, I think that would, I'm going to go back to Mr. Vogel, but I believe that's, that was what he just said we would have.
We would, we would necessarily have a procedure before going to the hearing. In other words, there would be a letter or email from me saying, this is how the hearing is going to go. We know from the motion that it'll be one speaker, it'll be per side, live, it'll be 20 minutes per side, and then there'll be, you know, other formalities or logistics of, if you choose to have a lawyer represent you, let us know three days, four days ahead of time, that type of thing. So, there will necessarily be that communication prior to the hearing.
Okay, and because I only asked that question, because I had asked the question before, and one of the answers given to us was, it will be at the board, the board's discretion, or the board chair's discretion. And I would feel much more comfortable if we must have this hearing with testimony that we have it already lined out, not at, if it's our, if it's at our discretion, we need to discretion it and write it out before we, before we do it. And then, and to have the whole board get to decide, and not at the board chair's decision. That's, that's all I'm, was making the clarification, because we had, I thought I had heard you tell us that it would be at the board's choosing. And so, we're not choosing that right now. We're just saying, if this, if that. That's why I wanted to kind of clarify a little bit.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure. There's a lot of ifs or ambiguity. The school board has had hearings before. The superintendent, the school district have, you know, set procedures of, you know, how this goes, and the communications that go out to the folks who are involved in the appeal hearing. We will follow that, that template. We won't deviate.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Walker?
Just to that point, that's not entirely accurate. I don't think we've ever had a hearing. This is a public hearing. This is not a private hearing. So, we might have some procedures, but this is unprecedented. So, I would honestly be more comfortable, not that I'm going to vote to do it, but more comfortable knowing what we're going to do, and what the public expects out of this board when it comes to this hearing. It's only fair, I think. We haven't even set a date. We don't, I mean, we might have some things that we've done in the back, you know, as far as hearing procedure, but we've never done this before.
Mr. Vogel?
I think the board would have, would be given, both sides, the board would be given a board packet of documents that both sides will have an opportunity to, to submit. Both sides will have an opportunity to be represented by counsel, and will ask for notice. I think these are just logistics. But if you want to choose to move to amend the motion, to add those types of logistics into the motion, you are free to do so on a motion to amend.
I think Ms. Crable tried to do that.
That's what I was doing.
Yeah, that, she was trying to do that, because like, this is a public hearing, so...
Your amended motion.
My amended motion was to include the procedures of this public hearing, because we have not had a public hearing before. This is a discretionary hearing, and we've not had, the only public hearing that some people on this board have had is a censure and a vote of no confidence. Those are the only public hearings that four of us have been involved with. And there were specific guidelines on what we had to do, and what we could say and not say.
I, and I don't mean to disagree, but we did have one other one with a parent that, recently.
A public one?
Yes, we did. Yeah, sure did.
Oh, sorry. Unprecedented, Ms. Siles, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll retract that statement.
I'm sorry?
I'll retract that statement.
Okay, all right, fine. We have an amended motion, and I believe you seconded. Is that correct? Yes, ma'am. So, we have amendment, a second to have all the specifics. Could you say it again one more time, please?
Yeah, I would like to have, if we are going to vote to do it, I would like to have, to know what the procedures are before we agree to have the hearing.
Okay. And I will have discussion on that. I think that my, my point is, I think that we've, we've had things before. We've never done that. We've never had to have it all in a, in a motion. So, but let's, unless there's other discussion on that, we'll, this is on the amendment, Ms. Crable's amended motion, amendment seconded by Ms. Walker. Yeah, I know.
Mr. McManus? Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Mason?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Mr. Wildebor?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
That amendment is defeated four to three. At this point, we will call the question, that Ms. Bradford's motion was to have a hearing with one person being able to speak from both sides. Ms. Bowie, if you would, please call the roll.
Twenty minutes.
And 20 minutes aside.
20 minutes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Each side.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
No.
Ms. Walker?
No.
And Mr. McManus?
No. That passes four to three, so we will have a hearing with the stipulations, as we said, 20 minutes and one person speak each time. Would you like to set the date on that today or would we rather do that afterwards? Let's, Wildebor.
Second to either.
We have, we have a, I would like to make a motion then, we have a, a meeting already scheduled for the 24th at 10 o'clock. We could come after that at, say, 1 o'clock for that.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, you gotta be here. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you gotta be here. So, let's look at our calendar. Again, would, is, Wildebor, we set the meeting right now or would we rather set out some dates and?
How much prep time does the school district need?
Dr. Faust?
Are we ready to roll? Okay, so that's, that's a week. So I think we should give the school system enough time, since there's only going to be one of them, to present an argument. Mr. Wildebor, I think that we should just send out a meeting notice to try to collaborate our calendars within the next month to have this appeal.
Okay. Is that the will of the board? I think so. Okay, we will send out a meeting notice. We will let Ms. Gates and also the school system know on that. Then we'll carry on to our next bit of business, which is a board professional development training. That would be Ms. Crable. I said me, but it's Ms. Crable is actually, yes, ma'am?
Yep. So, everybody at your seat, I gave you a packet of information that I have pulled together. I did want to make a note that we need, on the agenda, where it says.
Okay.
So you, everybody should have a, a packet from the Carousel Center, which we'll talk about, and a packet of information from me that I have put together for our discussion purposes. And then the also too, wanted to call attention under main points, where it said Board of Education will discuss professional development, training opportunities and options and trainings, including CLN. There's no reason why that is there, that doesn't get any more credence from that. And that was basically added after our agenda review, so I just wanted to point that out. The, so you'll see on your top, it is, it's right there, including the CA, that wasn't part of our board agenda review. I have it, so.
She did bring it up.
She did bring it up, but what I'm saying is it doesn't have any more, there's no reason why we, why that is there. We did, I could have put instead, including NCSBA, including blah, blah, blah. So that is just another one that's added on there. So if you look at this, it's, the, the front page is called the Board of Education Professional Development and Training Opportunities. So what I did was I listed some of the things that I have been thinking about that we needed, and I asked every one of the board members, you know, to tell me the kinds of things that you want to do. And I got some information from Ms. Barnhart, and I got some information from Ms. Walker's, and those are included in here. So I'll just start at the top so you can see what we have. First is NCSBA. They have three kinds of training. They have in-person, video subscription service, and customized training. So you'll see in your packet, the video library, and I didn't type them all out, so I wanted to try and get this on one page for us to talk. You'll see the video library and the current, it looks like this. It has all the things listed there. The, forgot to make you a copy. Okay. So it has that one, and then right behind, these are the video subscription that we, I, I thought that we had subscribed to, but was told we do not subscribe to this. It's $1,500 a year for us to have unlimited access to all of these video trainings that we can watch at our leisure, we can watch together as a group, so I will be talking about that a little bit. The other, the, the video subscription renewal, it, this one just sort of puts it in the one that has the dots. This puts it in the order of when they're having in-person trainings that match the online trainings, if we needed to have more of that. In the custom section, their master board training, that four of us have been to before, where it is over the course of several months, where someone from NCSBA, usually a contractor, comes in and we learn how to work together as a board, what the board's jobs are, reaffirming our board norms, reaffirming, reaffirming or starting any standard operating procedures, how we work with our superintendent. So that is, that is a really good one that we as a board have not done yet. Next on the, next in your packet is, before we move on, it has a front, and this one with dots is supposed to have a back, I just realized it didn't have a back, but it, there's only, you know, there's only like two dots, you know, I mean, there's only one more dot that class that's missing. The other one is the 23, 24 training events and events. These are other ones that we can get from NCSBA, their conferences, and COSPA, which is the consortium of state school boards associations, which our NCSBA belongs to. So these are the trainings and events that we can also attend. So I've got, those are all from the NCSBA that are included in a lot of our materials. Next on here is, it's the last page of your, of our, of the packet I gave you, was information from the Carolinas Academic Leadership Network. And so the only, they don't have any trainings or anything lined up yet. They do have categories on where they do have training. And this was rolled out on July the 3rd at a meeting in Charlotte, where the, and the Carolina Academic Leadership Network is a consortium from the John Locke Foundation and the Palmetto Promise Institute, both of which are, the John, John Locke Foundation is a conservative think tank based in North Carolina, and Palmetto Promise Institute is a conservative think tank in South Carolina. So that's the, the information that Ms. Barnhart had brought to us, but we had also all gotten an email on. But there is nothing more to, for me to put out there that they're offering yet. It just says the kinds of things, policy, networking, governance, crisis response assistance, leadership, professional development, and legislative outreach. So, but there's no, there's no stuff yet.
I think there is. I think there's something in September, and I think it has to do with Robert's Rules of Order, but I could be wrong.
There is something coming up with September, but there was nothing listed on, I mean, I went all throughout their website and, yeah, so the, if you signed up for it or you became a member of this, then you would have gotten that, but the, there's nothing in, you know, set in stone on that one yet. But it is an option, you know, of training for us.
Just a question. So we heard how much NC, you know?
NCSBA.
Yeah, thank you, NCSBA is, how much is there?
I could find no information. I searched, you know, through all around the website for the Carolinas Academic Leadership Network. And the, the only thing I got this from was a picture that was on the website. And it was the same picture that you sent me when I asked, what is CLN, because I didn't know what it was. So they don't have anything yet. They don't have prices set, you know, they, they do have people assigned to do these things, but they haven't done anything yet. It's brand new.
I can answer that question, it's free.
It's free?
Okay. So the, okay, so that's good. Thank you for that.
Free's a good phrase.
All right, so moving on down the line, so that's NCSBA. That's the first thing on the list and the last thing on the list. Next are some things that I thought would be helpful for our group as we are setting policy and that, and we are listening to our principals and listening to our teachers. And the work session that we had, I was pleased to hear that all the things that they talked to us about were things that I had included on this list of ideas that were, might be important to us to decide. One of them is training, it's a three-hour training on the community resiliency model that the New Hanover County Resiliency Task Force can do for us. Three hours, it's a trauma-sensitive, trauma-informed training and, which includes discussion on ACES. And that was what Ms. Walker had asked, you know, me to look into some training for that.
What dates that, I'm sorry?
No, I don't have any dates on these because we, these are all ones that we can pick a date and then we can get these facilitators to come and talk to us about. Darkness to Light Stewards of Children, that's a Carousel Center program that they can lead or New Hanover County Schools has some trained facilitators that they can work together with us. It's a two and a half hour class, it's required for all school staff anyway, so I thought that, and it's about, you know, sexual abuse prevention and how to recognize, you know, different things. I thought that if all of our staff had that, then we would, we would want to know what our staff is getting, student-facing staff, is that right, Ms. Barnum? Okay. So the, the other two right in, below it?
She said yes.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I saw, huh? All staff, that's what, you know, the, all staff. So bringing in, and, oh, and we just saw that we had some awards, you know, to the school, the secondary schools that went through that. And if we went through that as a board, then we would be the only district in the state of North Carolina that had all of our schools and our board, you know, on board with that. So that program is in, is outlined in here, in the packet, that they thought they were making a presentation tonight, and they were not. So they gave us this, this handout. So this is what, you know, we can look through at our leisure. Next on the list is bringing in the bystander and shifting boundaries, and those are two classes that are taught in, bringing in the bystander is taught by Coastal Horizons in our ninth grade health and PE classes. When they get it, it is over three days, 90-minute days. I'm not, you know, saying that we need to have that same level of training, but they can do a synopsis for us on what, what they're teaching in, in that class. The, and we can also have, you know, Joelle Newman come and talk to us about, you know, she's our lead PE teacher, health and PE teacher can talk. The next one is shifting boundaries, and that is taught in the middle school. It's also a Coastal Horizons program, but it's taught by the middle school health and PE teachers. And the shifting boundaries is the one that, where the students identified hotspots in their schools, you know, places that they felt most comfortable, most uncomfortable, and so that the individual schools can start to address those issues. One of the questions that you had asked, you know, of the principals. The, next on the list down is mental health first aid. That is a program that, you know, pretty much many of us have already had because it's been around for a long time. It's a full-day class, and it's pretty intense, so the recommendation was to do community resilience model and darkness to light first before you get into the mental health first aid. But again, you know, we can, you know, look to our professional staff, you know, to help guide us on the order and helping us get facilitators.
Ms. Crable?
Yeah.
Who would be leading that or teaching that?
Mental health first aid. Ms. Barnum, do we have people who can do that or is that?
Yes, we have trainers.
Okay. So, yeah, the, this has been around, I know that the New Hanover County government, you know, pretty much all of their employees, you know, have had this training. When it first came out, what was it, like 10 years ago almost, that most of the schools participated in some way, shape, or form, you know, in that class. It's pretty intense, it's, it's all day. But it, again, it helps us understand where our student population is and where some of our, our teaching population is. Next out on the list was, I just called it, you know, how poverty affects the brain because we have to get a handle on, some of our principals mentioned that in there, you know, we have to meet our kids where they are. And so I was thinking, you know, after talking with, you know, some folks about this, that UNCW could help lead it, Cape Fear Community College has staff that could help lead it. I brought one book that I was reading called Teaching with Poverty in Mind, that a lot of our schools have, have used and our counselors have used. So that is another option for us just to get ourselves in the same mind frame as some of our students. Next, a Title IX overview that we, again, this is one of the ones where we could hold off until the new regulations are issued. They should be expected out, they're expect, they were expected out in April, then it got pushed to June, and now it's out to October. So.
And just a thought, you know, and maybe we want to do it together, which makes sense too. But we do have, you know, next week at the leadership conference, there'll be a session on Title IX too, that we could attend.
The, probably, and then I can ask Joelle what, I can, well, we can ask, we can ask Dr. Faust. What, what are we talking about in there? I mean, is it an overview or is it talking about like reporting and that kind of stuff?
It's more so just kind of breaking for school leaders.
Okay.
It's not going to be tied, I'm not sure if you're looking for something for, what we'll be doing is for school leaders.
Right.
Or, yes, we'll do supervisors, I'm not sure if that's what the board wants.
No, I don't think that's what the board wants. I think that the board needs the understanding of what the law actually is and what the regulations actually are, because I don't think that we as a board understand that the law and how it applies to sexual and gender harassment, as well as athletics, because Title IX has two parts. And so I just want us to have more of a working knowledge of the, the regulation as a whole, not how do, how do we report, because that's what the schools do. So that might not be, I mean, you, you're welcome to listen in on that, Pete, but it wouldn't be what I'm, what I was talking about here. But again, this is for the board to decide what we, what we think we need. I was just throwing things out. So that's all I had, and if anybody's got any other things, I'm happy to update the spreadsheet. And if you look here, what, what my plan was, was we have everybody's name, and on the back you'll see the rest of the names, that our board clerk, you know, can, can help us keep track of trainings that we've been to either as a whole or individually. So, and just as a tool for us, so we, that we are making the best decisions we can because we are not the professionals in any of these areas. And I'm having a hard time making policy on things that we just don't know enough about.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
In talking about the Title IX, don't we have attorneys that could teach that?
Absolutely. We do, I mean, this, I didn't put down who, I mean, we've got, you know, you've got people that can train. Yeah, so this, I didn't, I only put down the ones that when we, when we already have outside agencies that have trained us or do the training for us, but, you know, certainly that, you know, that was on your, on your resume, that, you know, you can do some of this. You know, Terry, you know, is, is well-versed in that. So, anyway, so, yeah, so I didn't say who necessarily, some of the ones I did say who was because that's who does the program. I didn't put dates because we need to decide what would we like to do first, and then I can go, you know, try and set that up or get some dates and send it out. I'm not even suggesting that we run through this, you know, all in three days, you know, we can spread it out, you know, what do we think we need first? If, if I were to say anything, I would think that we should do the darkness to light because that's what, you know, all of our staff is doing. And it's a program that is pretty eye-opening and pretty important since we all are mandatory reporters, so I think that that would be a good one. And then followed second by the community resiliency model, you know, ACES, so that we understand a lot of our students.
I think Ms. Barnhart had a question for you.
Well, I just, I noticed one of the things that I emailed you did not make it on this list, but I just wanted to share too, I think as we're rolling out one-to-one devices and the implementation and the use for our staff and for our students, I think it's very effective that we are acknowledging where the discrepancies are and how to utilize acknowledging in the classroom and so where to where, because being a one-to-one district is going to help us operate, I realize my mic is off, I'm sorry, to help us operate better and more effectively. And so to have training on that to ensure that we're meeting our students at our different levels with the appropriate technology use in the classroom and optimizing learning time. And the whole point, and I said this in the agenda review, was discussing the Carolina Academic Leadership Network. And Ms. Bradford, thank you for mentioning that they were a zero cost to be a member. In our board policy, when we travel for trainings, we have a stifle, and we all do, that, that are approved, and in the policy it says by NCSBA unless otherwise board-approved. So with this organization offering different trainings, if this is something we want to allow to be used, that our stifle would be able to use for to travel, to go to Raleigh or Charlotte, like you said, this, if we included that in the policy, so I would make that motion to allow Carolina Academic Leadership Network as one of the sources that we would be able to train under. And I'll make a motion for that.
And I would second that.
We're making a motion. I don't know what that is.
So that, I think, should be in policy meetings. So if we could hold that discussion into a policy instead of here, because this wasn't really supposed to be a business of, of vote other, other than we agree we want a training. But.
Can I ask Mr. Vogel clarify, is that, are we allowed to make a motion under old business?
Oh, yeah, we can, yeah.
Oh, yeah, you sure can.
Yes.
Thank you. So.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I will do a little discussion.
Ms. Walker?
I mean, I don't know what this organization is. I know before we have approved NS, School Board Association, I can't even say it right, and UNC School of Government. And as far as I know, that's about it. So I don't even know what this organization is. Can someone explain to me what this says?
Yeah, I was, if, if you look on here, and I have some handouts I can email, the, what I did was I Googled this organization and it says, "The collaborative brainchild of three nonprofit organizations, the John Locke Foundation in Raleigh, North Carolina, and South Carolina's Palmetto Promise Institute, and the South Carolina Policy Council. CLAN is dedicated to supporting school boards in their mission to focus academic excellence in our communities. Our organization is committed to offering non-ideological opportunities that equip board members with the essential skills and knowledge needed to be effective leaders in education." When, just as you're Googling this yourself, if you type this in, it's going to redirect you back to the John Locke Foundation, and it's going to give the, the, the key people who are involved. So you have to go and look like under Wikipedia, or you have to look up these individual organizations on your own. And I can share, I mean, I've done that homework, I can share that with you, or you can look them up yourself. But it's, it, this is brand-new, I mean, it just started. So the, I would say, I agree that we may want to just, before we add it to the list, we want to just, you know, attend some trainings to see, but the, it doesn't matter, you know, to me, if, if it's something we think that will help us.
I can speak to that. I actually went to that launch. I had a window between Route Canal or, no, Route Canal, and I went. And they had, it's North Carolina and South Carolina, so it's a lot of resources from two states. But the superintendent of schools for the state of South Carolina taught a class, he taught a training, and school budgets and finance. I was very interested in it. And he did the data for South Carolina, he did the data for North Carolina in terms of how it's spent and per, per classroom, per child. It was very informative. I was quite impressed with the, the level of the training. There were two congressmen, or Congresswoman and Congressman in there, a state senator, they all spoke. So we were, we were, we were interacting with people at the federal level that are in education, which was, was quite amazing. I, they, they allow, it's free, and they had a reimbursement for your gas and your hotel. But I would like to be able to put in for that to count towards my training if I'm going to go. And I'm impressed with what they've done enough to go to one, to another one.
So, so did I hear correctly, this is a conservative organization? Is that what I heard you saying, Ms. Crable?
That's, that is what they, they say on their webpages, and then it also says something that, like, "John Locke Thundershinsinks a Better Balance Between Public Sector and Private Institution of Family, Faith, Community, and Enterprise." They talk a little bit about libertarian in there. The, the same statements were on the Palmetto Promise Institute. And it's a conservative and libertarian group as part of their state policy network. The, and then there were some newspaper articles, one from the Carolina Journal, one from just regular old news in there. So just regular old news.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Ms. McManus.
Can we lay this on the table and add it to our 24th sun o'clock meeting? We come in early. Because we allow, allowed, allotted 10 minutes, we've been talking over 30. And we're still talking. And we're not going to resolve or solve anything tonight.
Okay, so you're making, you're amending the motion to lay it on the table, correct?
Until, depending on the 24th, to further discuss this, agree to what we might want to do. Definitely.
Your second.
Second.
Okay, Walker's second, Mrs. Walker, excuse me, second. Second, we have a first and a second laid on the table. Ms. McManus with the first.
Until when?
Till the 20, what'd you say, Mr. McManus?
24th, we already have a meeting at 10.
Yeah, but that's, that's to.
We can meet at 9:30 then or quarter to 10.
Okay.
If we're going to can talk another 35 minutes.
9:30 on that day, okay. So 9:30 on the 24th, you said. Okay, we have a first and a second. And the other discussion about the motion, amended motion, to lay it on the table. First and second. Ms. Booley, would you please call the roll?
Are we voting to lay on the table?
Lay on the table.
Okay.
Yes, this is the first and second to lay it on the table.
Ms. Bradford?
It'd take less time to just vote on the motion, so I'm going to say no.
Ms. Barnhart?
Now.
Ms. Crable?
To lay it on the table.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes, but I think I must have been misunderstood. I was talking about the discussion for a professional development, not the rest of the meeting.
No, just, just for professional development.
Okay.
Yeah, I just forgot what we were voting on, I'm sorry, I had an old lady moment.
Okay, so we have a, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes, so that passes, it's laid on the table. We will just pick it up at 9:30 on the 24th.
And we'll pick it up with the motion in a second?
Yes. That's where we're at. Okay, so we're going to carry on with the board agenda review process. We've given 20 minutes for that. I won't start my watch this time. All right, it is 8:56, so we will be done shortly after 9:00. Okay? Ms. Bradford?
I have studied this and thought about it and talked to a couple people, and quite aware that our meetings take way too long. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that you appoint an ad hoc committee to discuss why the agenda briefing is not working for our board when it works so effectively for New Hanover County Commissioners and the City Council, and two, to identify what steps we as a board can take to make it work.
My second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, Mr. McManus. Any discussion? Ms. Crable?
Yes, so before we, the board chair puts this committee together, hopefully, and I didn't hear how many people that Ms. Bradford was suggesting. She said three, okay. So I wanted to throw this out for the board, for that committee, if we approve it. What are we actually supposed to be doing at, hearing about, and discuss at the, at the agenda review? That is, I think, one of the key things that the county commissioners do differently than we do. Are we talking, are we supposed to be hearing consensus items, policy consensus item, information items, closed-session items? And I'm going to tell you that I kept track of the time, and so the time that we spent in, during that meeting, we spent 25 minutes on information and we spent 25 minutes on information here. Consensus items took us, we didn't, we took 10 minutes at the agenda review, but that's because we didn't have all of the items, you know, to look at. So, and then we have to decide, are we voting on items? Because that was one thing that got thrown in a monkey wrench. We can't vote on things if we don't put it over here and give board members and the public upfront knowledge that we are going to be voting on something. We have 11 days before the agenda review meeting, which is actually 18 days before the board meeting, to submit stuff. So maybe we need to review Policy 2330, board meeting agenda, because that's a lot of, a lot of lead time out there. Some of the items that we put on the agenda review are not posted until right before the agenda review, so we don't have a chance to look at them, so we can't be prepared. And then, and our closed session lasts a long time, sometimes, because that's what it's designed to do, so that the people here don't have to have, sit here while we're waiting for that. So that is a lengthy thing. And then my last one was, we frequently have other meetings tagged on the front and the back end of a supposed two-hour agenda review meeting, and it can morph into four to five hours. So those are considerations that may be why it's not working, that I think some of us, we could just, we could agree right here, but I don't have a problem with, with the committee.
Ms. Barnhart?
I just want to say that prior to us starting the agenda review, what would happen is select board members would be able to go to an agenda review. It was closed to the public and central office. I like that we're able to come together and openly discuss and have the staff share with the community because it is streamed. I believe that it is transparent and I value that. I do think it can be streamlined and maybe some of the suggestions of the procedures with the subcommittee, but I like having the opportunity to come and openly discuss, and it's an opportunity for the public to see and hear the justification why.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go on, and I'll go to you, if that's okay. My, my thought real quickly is just a reminder, we have, we used to have two very long night meetings. So we were here until sometimes 11:30, two long nights. And then, as I said with last week, we need to finalize the agenda at the meeting, but I think that maybe having this thing, I, this subcommittee would be a great idea. Ms. Walker?
So the whole idea was to shorten our meetings and this not happened. So whatever this ad hoc committee does, and hopefully it's full of members that can have debate on things and not just pass it, whatever, I think that it would be helpful to have those discussions that Ms. Crable just brought up at this ad hoc committee or whatever it looks like. And we figure out, I, I don't have a problem, I like the fact that it is open, I think that is a good plus. But if it's not saving us time, it's just, we're just having two meetings. And I agree, things need to be timely. They shouldn't be things popping up on the agenda that we did not have at agenda review either. So, I mean, if we need to study what the county commissioners do and emulate that, let's do that. But I, I just don't like having a meeting that's almost as long as another meeting, and I just don't know why. Because, I mean, if we can change it, where, say, maybe we can have the information at the agenda review and then we can just come vote on things, then that's great. But I do like, Ms. Barnhart said, I like the fact that it is open. I like that.
Okay. At this point, we'll take the vote. We have a motion, second, to, to form an ad hoc committee to study the board agenda review process. Ms., first and second, Ms. Booley, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
Ms. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Absolutely.
Ms. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes, and I will name that committee now. I was thinking at this time, Mr. McManus, would you serve on that committee?
Hey, box, hell, no.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Mason, would you serve on that committee?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Bradford, since you made the motion, would you serve on that committee, please?
Yes.
That committee is formed. We will look for your discussion and review as soon as possible. Mr. McManus, would you chair that committee, please?
I know where you are.
Yes, thank you. Good, thank you.
No.
Really?
Really?
Come on, Hugh, come on.
All right.
You're telling me to come on, as much as I love. We had a 10-minute discussion, all professional, and you talked for 35 minutes.
All right, Ms. Bradford, would you share, would you share that?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bradford's chair.
He's going to be home.
All right, going on to committee reports. Thank you, board members. I look forward to that, that report. Head start, that would be Ms. Barnhart.
Yes, and so what you have before you is the May head start report, and with that, I mean, you can see the highlights, they had some great field days, the parents were very excited to have the opportunity to come in and share just end-of-year celebrations and graduations, and some of the head start committee is moving on up to kindergarten, so there's going to be some, a few new members of council. But with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but.
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have one quick comment. If you run down the line, when you get to single parent, 183, I continue to see these high single-parent numbers. And I think that, I'm just going to throw this out here, until we start to address fatherlessness in our school district, I don't think we're going to go anywhere. We've got to put more of our effort towards families that have been broken apart. We just have to.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Crable?
I just want to throw out, I mean, that, that is an alarming statistic, and it has been around for quite some time. But what I'm hearing from a lot of people in the community and a lot of people on this board is that we don't want government interference. So why are we now going to try and legislate or address families that don't have fathers? Because there's all kinds of reasons that we might not understand. So some of our trainings might help us get to that point.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to take Ms. Bradford's question and ask about the wraparound supports that we offer for our pre-K children, but as of now, we don't have an answer for the problem that Ms. Bradford suggests, so I agree, we need.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the Legislative Committee.
So the Legislative Committee, I had reached out to, to schedule it, hoping to get on the radar for the end of July, but right, as of right now, session is still not wrapped up yet, so hopefully they'll be wrapped up soon. I have reached out to the regional pender in Brunswick County as well, that's something that we discussed in our first meeting, to hopefully set a date for sometime in September that we can hopefully host, and then in October to host a luncheon, October, November, that's dependent on when they go back to session or not. So, but the, the goal is to meet at the end of this month with being able to wrap up and give an overview of the legislative things that have passed, the budget things, and to talk about some of legislative agenda initiatives that we can advocate for on behalf of our county, so.
Any questions from board members? If not, looking forward to the turnabout, turnaround, excuse me, it's getting late, turnaround task force update. Ms. Walker?
Chair, it's only 9:00.
Oh, yeah, well, that's true, this is early for us.
Party.
See that, that, that subcommittee, that ad hoc, I can't talk to you, that ad hoc committee's already working.
Well, I suppose so. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we discussed at my last briefing on the task force, we had our introductory meeting in May with members, and we drilled on, into our whys. First meeting, Dr. Fason went over the data on our high-party schools and gave an overview of growth versus proficiency, and we really stressed the need for a community to be part of our success. I went on to discuss my why, which opened the conversation on ACES, including a lot about my own, stressing that success with our students must address the effects of trauma and poverty on how our students learn. We then discussed developing a framework for this community task force and got feedback on our mission and vision statements, and also asked for suggestions for a principal survey. And the only reason I'm giving you an update on the one, because it was so long ago, so I just wanted to update. As for our second meeting, it was held on the 25th of June. It focused on the importance of successful leadership and supporting them in their schools. We had a brief intro into our task force member whys as well. Dr. Fason presented research, which included best practices. We then had a couple outstanding principals come and give brief overviews of their experiences and what they felt helped make them successful, including building a great team in the building and holding students as their main focus. There was an opportunity for members of the task force to ask them questions in real time and get some very candid answers, and it was a very great conversation. We then went over the principal survey, picked out emerging themes, which we then turned into three main subcommittees as our initial focus. These themes included improving the mental health of students, teachers, and staff, turnaround leadership, and school-community environment. community environment. Um, and finally, we nailed down our mission and vision statements. Um, the vision is, all schools in New Hanover County are high performing, and our students are thriving. And the mission is to smart, spark community-based best practices with our low-performing schools to enable all students in New Hanover County to succeed. Our next meeting is going to be the end of September, September 27th.
Awesome. Just a question, is that, um, is it open to the general public, or is it, is it closed?
Um, we have, we have, sorry. We have meetings here, um, you know, it's not a publicly noticed meeting, there aren't, like, a majority of board members there. Um, I think, uh, that both the meetings we've had so far have been really successful, and the environment has been very relaxed enough where we can really share and, and strategize about what we're doing. Um, I know there's been some interest in, you know, some board members coming, and I'm happy to, to talk to the members about that. Um, but it's not what you would call, I think a lot of developmental training stuff, I don't think is necessarily open to the public, so, um, I'm just going to just put that there. I don't, I don't know if Dr. Fason, you have anything to add to that, or, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Well, right now, we're working, um, mostly in our subcommittees, so it might be, um, harder to, to do that, not to say we're doing anything in secret, um, but we are trying to break off, because we want to make sure we work in our subcommittees. I don't know if I heard you speak about, we do have, um, our next meeting will be, um, our principals will be doing a roundtable discussion, and some speed dating with our committee members, so I, we can definitely look at, um, something like that, but we are trying to do more in our subcommittees, and the subcommittees then come together and report out to the main, the main committee.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is, first of all, I want to thank you both for, for putting this together, I think this is an outstanding, uh, committee, um, and I would, I'll be honest, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to be kind of truthful here, I'd love to come, and just, you know, not every time, but I'd love to come at least and see it, and then be part of it, at least one time. Ms. Barnhart?
Well, yeah, and I have a passion for priority schools. When I first came on, um, I asked a lot of questions of our staff, and what we were doing to help support our schools. Um, I was actually told by a board member, though, when I was talking about priority schools, to get in my lane, and so I'm just curious what your idea is to include all board members, because I believe it's the job of all seven of us to make sure that our priority schools are of top notch, and so I want to make, I just want to see what the plan looks like, to make sure that we are included to help fulfill the vision of whatever this task force is like.
Mr. Chair, I'm not really sure what Ms. Barnhart is talking about, I mean, she's addressing me personally, or, I don't know what she's talking about, but I have no idea about staying in lane comments, or whatever. I don't think I ever said that to her, and I don't know why she's coming at me with that. So, Mr. Chair, if you want to control this, I would appreciate it. I have no idea what she's talking about. Absolutely.
The, um, question for you, um, on the, on the task force, I haven't had a chance to look and see who's on that task force. Um, do we have any, um, teachers or principals, um, a part, a part of the task force, or is it basically just community members and some of our central office staff?
So, I think, I'm not sure of, Dr. Fason, did you want to take that?
So, what we decided, um, and when I say we, as a task force, when we first came together, we did not want to do the normal practice of one principal speaks for all. So we have what we call the principal's voice, so we will always have different principals coming to visit and share their insight and what they need. And as I shared, our next meeting will actually be a roundtable discussion with the 12 principals, and some speed dating. And, um, that way, we can hear from all the principals, and then we'll have principals coming and sharing their input, because it's about individual needs for the schools, and we did not want one set of principals speaking for everyone. We are also considering, and we've thrown about, um, how to get our parents in these, uh, parents and teachers in these groups, and doing something to that nature. We're at the beginning stages, and we're kind of creating this, and, as, as it comes along, but it is definitely our intention to involve all of the stakeholders, we just don't want one group speaking for all 12 schools.
And can I add to that as well? Um, to Dr. Fason's point, this is something new. This is something that is a pillar of our, um, strategic plan, and is something that is very much needed. So there should be no opposition, and no problem, we are working really well together, the survey results are good, and I think the plan that we have coming, that's coming, is going to be very helpful to our schools, and that is the main point of the whole thing. So, um, you know, I think Dr. Fason did stress that, you know, every school is different, you know, you're not going to have College Park be the same as Freeman, et cetera, so that is why it's important to have principals' voice, and ask them what they actually need. And so that survey was very, very well, um, I think, answered, if that's the right way to say it. There has been some reporting on it as well, that has shared all the data, so if anybody's curious about that, it's out there.
All right, we'll carry on. Thank you again, Ms. Walker. Uh, we'll carry on with our EDI Committee, and that will be Ms. Mason.
Hopefully, we can keep this one short. Um, we didn't have a meeting in July for the EDI Committee, um, but in June, we met, and we began discussion of the committee's role, as it pertains to the strategic plan. Um, in looking through the strategic plan, looking under the, um, EDI umbrella, um, I noticed that the, the goal that was directly aligned with the committee had been achieved, and so I wanted to go through and find what the purpose of the committee was at this point. So we had a lot of great discussion, um, as, as to the role of the committee, and we acknowledged that the document itself is a living document, and we started talking about possibly developing, um, proposed changes that they would then, we would then bring to the board to approve. Um, we didn't come close to finishing the discussion, there's lots of talking, lots of ideas, um, lots of feedback, so we will be having more discussion on that at our next meeting in August.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask Ms. Mason a question about that? Because, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because when I had looked at the strategic plan, I had noticed that the EDI Committee had fulfilled its goal, and so is it your recommendation to continue this committee?
As of right now, I want to make sure that we've covered all the bases. Um, once we get to that point, that'll be a discussion point that we have as a group, but as of right now, we're looking through the strategic plan, um, making sure that there is, all the bases are covered.
We will carry on. Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss you?
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I thought I saw a hand go up over there.
Nope. Uh, any correspondence?
Yeah, the, um...
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Craybill?
Yeah, so, uh, two things, um, but one, I'm just going to skip one, but the, the one I wanted to talk about first was the Summer Institute, and I wanted to give kudos to, um, the HR department, and the training, um, the PD, you know, and Dr. O'Brien, and her whole entire team, that, um, they had some really good sessions. I was able to attend one about exercise in the brain in the classroom, and I was happy to see that that's going to be in the Leadership Institute. Um, I also attended, um, the program called Building Authentic Family Partnerships, um, that was run by some people in our student support, and some teachers, and that was an awesome, um, asked me about folding towels, and I will, um, fill you in on why we, why folding towels is important. Um, and then the other one that, and Mr. Phillips, I mean, Mr. Sutton alluded to about, um, thinking differently, you know, and how we build relationships in the schools. So, um, I just wanted to give kudos for that, and if you guys ever have a chance to attend that next summer, to do. The other thing is part of correspondence, and I was going to give you an update on the, um, the NCSBA conference, but what I think I'm going to do is, um, I've already sent you guys the, um, I sent it to you, the agenda before I went, and nobody had any questions or things for me to ask, but, um, I can send you all of these stuff that we got in the Dropbox. It's not the same, reading the slides without having the conversation, but I'm happy to, you know, have, um, updated conversations. Um, but I, one thing that left me, when, um, Michael Lee was there, and he talked for a good amount of time, one of the things he said in, in one of his comments was, "We've done a horrible job with mental health in North Carolina." So, um, I think, you know, that speaks to one of our strategic plan things that we are trying to work on, and that he says we need to have more K through 12, um, interaction with our community colleges, which we do very well. So, and I just, I wanted to brag on us a little bit, because a lot of the things that we, we learned about there, we are doing, and we are doing well, and, um, we still got quoted, you know, I still got used as an example in one of the negative areas, but we are not the, the negative on, in every category anymore. So it was, that was also nice to hear, that, um, we were mentioned, but in, in a very positive light.
Good, very good, very good. Any else? Yes, sir, Mr. McManus?
I'd like to, uh, as soon as Dr. Brunson and her staff, I've heard so many, who raised for the coding. I mean, I've heard, I've heard it before, but not like I've had, I've heard that recently, it sounds awesome, and I also like to thank Dr. Barnum for that meeting today with the roundtable with the principals and the staff, makes it a long day, that, we need to do more of that.
Absolutely.
And I felt really relaxed today, and I thought it was just a good exchange, listening to principals talk.
Absolutely. Good, I'm glad it worked. And thank you again. Um, we'll carry on to the announcements, but the announcements here are old ones, so we skip over those, because we're not having a July board meeting, we actually are, right now. Um, so we're having that, uh, we do not need a closed session, unless you guys really want one. Nobody? Okay, we'll pass over that. Uh, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Wildebohr, um, do we have, since we have already, you know, we've tabled the agenda review discussion until the ad hoc, um, when are we planning on having our next agenda review?
I would say that would be on the...
Is after the ad hoc committee, or?
I would say we probably would go ahead and keep that on the, on the books for this month.
The 25th, at 2:00?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And then we will see, you know, the ad hoc committee maybe can even help us with that at that point. Yes, sir? Mr. McManus?
One time you said you thought we might be doing it, since we did it on a Monday before, every, probably every Tuesday of the month. Does that still hold?
Well, the Tuesday, the last Tuesday of the month.
Right.
Is when we typically, we moved it one time to a Monday.
Yeah, that's right.
Because, so, okay. So, okay, um, so we have, did I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I thought I did. Did we hear a second?
Second.
I'll second. Okay, we have a first and second. Uh, all in favor, please stand up and leave. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.